All right, we're about two minutes to start. I don't know that. All right, we're about one minute to start. If we can go ahead and unmute our mics just so I can make sure that commissioners that are online are okay, if that's fair. I need to speak closer. Okay, can you hear me better? All right, very good. Okay, for commissioners and our court reporter, I would just like to have you let us know that you're here and who's online.
This is Commissioner Blackwell, are you going to do roll call or did you just want to hear her voice?
I just want to acknowledge at least upfront that you're here and then we'll do roll call after we kind of get things moving.
Okay, I'm here.
Thank you so much. And I see Commissioner Dick and let me know when the court reporter is in because I've got five blocks that I'm able to see. You can see it there on your screen as well. And we're close to start time. Very good, thank you.
Can you all see and or hear me now? This is the court reporter.
Yes, we can. Thank you so much for acknowledging that you're here.
Yes, I just need to be joined as a panelist so you all can hear me.
Okay, fantastic. Well, given you're here, we'll we'll go ahead and we're going to ask that we call this meeting to order, call it a session. So we know we've acknowledged the court reporter, some of our commissioners. Just so that we know, welcome everyone. Today is the Planning Commission for December 10, 2024. This is the hearing and action portion, which will be our all day today. That is where we hear cases that are presented for action by the Planning Commission. I'm going to do a little bit of roll call here just to ensure that we've got our commissioners. Commissioner Burton Falk, I present Commissioner Blackwell.
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick. I can see you, but I can't hear you. Very good. Commissioner Gammy. All right, Commissioner Maza.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neill is on her way. Commissioner Cantonia.
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz, who I know will be en route as well, and Commissioner Wu.
Here.
Thank you so much. All right, I'm going to read through today's agenda, which is pretty lengthy. And it is as follows. Agenda item A is approval of minutes. Agenda item B is correspondence. Agenda item C is plan of lots. Agenda item D is hearing and action part one. Agenda item E is hearing and action part two. And then agenda item F is the director's report. We're going to move up to approval of minutes. The date on that confirmed, please, for me. Commissioner Mazza.
I.
Confirm the date. Kate, can you confirm the date for me on those? 11:26.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, we are in receipt of minutes from 11:26, 2024. If there are no edits to those, can we have a motion from the floor to approve?
So moved.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Cantonia. Do I have a second? Commissioner Maza, I'll do roll call. Commissioner Burton Falk, I. Commissioner Blackwell?
I.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick.
I.
Thank you, Commissioner Gammy. All right, Commissioner Maza?
I.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill en route. Commissioner Cantonia.
I.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz. And Commissioner Wu.
I.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to correspondence. We are in receipt of correspondence for December 10, 2024. The following regarding item DCP-MPZC-2023-00441, the Esplanade Master Plan Development, we are in receipt of correspondence from the following. Lisa Bujacki, Quentin Bolick, Jonathan Zito, State Representative Arian A. Abney, Sam Patty, Michael Glenn Jr. Regarding item, regarding transit-oriented development zoning map amendments, we are in receipt of correspondence from the following. There were 41 comments from Engage PGH. Then we are in receipt of correspondence from Janessa Walter, Owen Kanter, the Polish Hills Civic Association Board of Directors, Marissa Packer, Claude Lavalley, Pete Fine, Stacy Desai, Snehal Desai, John Rhodes, Neil Desai, Corbin Curtis, Dimitri Black, Jack Billings, and Alexander Peyton. Regarding housing needs assessment zoning text amendments, we are in receipt of correspondence from the following. There are 98 comments from Engage PGH. Then correspondence is as follows. Maddie McGrady, Colleen Shuda, Alexander Peyton, David V. Off, Lucas Godchalk, Dimitri Black, Corbin Curtis, Dan Villarreal, Vlad Kaplan, Mark Burel, Amy Zeiss, Chris Beam, Lena Andrews, Pamela Austin, Strip District Neighbors, David Thats, Melvin Walls, Daniel Tassi, Jeff Ruby, Nicholas Rizzio, Human Rights City Alliance, Corbin Curtis, it looks like Dimitri Black again, Paul Heckbert, Connor Hayes, Michael Glamdan, Stephanie Flynn, Angela Echols, Connor Dickey, Neil Desai, Vlad Kaplan, The Fineview Community Organization, Scott Bricker, Bike Pittsburgh, Palma Austin, Christopher Beam Pro Housing Pittsburgh, Elizabeth Beam, and Jack Billings. That concludes correspondence from December 10,
You're okay?
Commissioner Dick, your mute is not on. Thank you. So we've completed agenda item A. Agenda item B, correspondence. Now we'll move to plan of lots. We have one item under plan of lots. That is as follows. DCP-Lot-2024-00664. Seeing, hearing none, we'll move forward. Commissioners, we are asking for preliminary approval today. Final approval, January 14. Do I have a motion from the floor? Thank you, Commissioner Maza. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cantonia. I'm going to do roll call. Commissioner Burton Falk, I. Commissioner Blackwell.
I.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick. Thank you. Okay. We're switching laptops. Hi there. If you all, I heard a cough, so I heard you. Can you all hear us here?
Yes, I can. I can hear you. This is the court reporter.
We can hear you now.
Awesome. Thank you so much. We do apologize. We had a little bit of technical difficulty. We've we've transitioned to a new laptop. We're going to be good to go. At this point, I'm claiming it ahead of time. Court reporter. Whoops. Okay. Good, we're all still here. Okay, so we are moving on to agenda item D. And that is hearing and action part one. We're going to move to item number one, which is BDA-2024-04164, which is 5527th Street. This is new construction of multi-unit apartments and happens to be in the Strip District. We're going to give a few moments here for Ms. Miriam to come up and walk us through that a little bit. My apologies, I moved a little too quick. Good job.
Okay, I I read the report, the brief report, and then ask applicant come here and introduce themselves and present the project. So LGA Partners Oil Project Development Plan Application, BDA 2024-04164, to construct a new multi-unit residential building at 55th 27th Street in the riverfront industrial mixed use in the Strip District. Tree Crossing Phase Two Master Plan has been approved for the question property, Building I, to construct a five-story, 200-unit multifamily market raid with a with a 50-foot high and provides the required parking in the off-site structure parking, Building H. The consolidation plan has been approved on June 5, 2023. The current proposed request is for a new six-story multi-unit residence for 240 dwelling units with a 64-foot-high structure and 38 onsite parking spaces. Eighty-four parking spaces are required, so 46 parking spaces are provided in Building H. Eighty-three bike parking space indoor and outdoor provided and three onsite loading areas. The building site's primary pedestrian access will be Railroad Street and 27th Street. And vehicle access will be from Spruce Way. The sidewalk along Public Street, 28th Street, 27th Street, and Railroad Street is 10 feet as required in the zoning code per section 905.04.1.4.1.3. Per section 905.4.1.3, one bonus point is required to exceed the proposed high of 60 feet. Therefore, the proposed project has been granted one point of transferring from the Crossing Phase Two Master Plan as it contribute for four bonus points from rainwater and onsite emergency consumption, new construction. Which one point will be used for this project? The stormwater permit was approved on August 16, 2024, but it has not issued yet. The same for flood plain permit. The applicant has submitted the shadow study and was accepted by the zoning staff. A construction management plan is required for this project. The applicant has submitted to review by the dummy staff, which review and accepted. The contextual design advisory panel reviewed the proposal project, resulting in suggestion about having more affordable units, adding more color within elevation, and the detailed design of the horizontal canopy band. A dam meeting is not required as there is no registered community organization for this area of request proposal development. The Mobility and Infrastructure Department has reviewed and accepted the TIS concept as the Tree Crossing Phase Two Master Plan. However, based on minor changes to the recent proposal, dummy will review the current proposal for the final approval. The tree curbs call had already been reviewed and approved. The proposal design has been coordinated with the city roster regarding street trees. The final proposal design meet the requirement and complies with the approve approving tree species for the Pittsburgh and landscaping ordinance. The proposal project is within Riverfront District and amending the approval of the Tree Crossing Phase Two Master Plan per section 905.04.1.3.1. B and 922.10.1. F. It's considered a project development plan. Therefore, it shall be approved per section 922.13.1. C by the board of the commissioner. Based on the information in the application and analysis of the fact of record, the city planning staff recommended approval a new six-story multi-unit residence for 240 dwelling units with a 64-foot-high structure and 38 onsite parking spaces and 46 parking spaces in Building H, 83 bike parking spaces indoor and outdoor area and three onsite loading area at 5527th Street in the riverfront industrial mixed use in the Strip District with the following conditions. The Department of Mobility and Infrastructure dummy shall review all the approval, review and approve all dummy permit and the construction management plan before issuing the record of zoning approval. Two, the amendment of Tree Crossing Phase Two Master Plan must review and approve per section 922.12. G. The final construction plans, including site plan and elevation, shall be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator before the final record of zoning approval is issued. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brandon Guy. I'm the president and founder of Steel Street Capital Partners, one of the development partners on this project.
And I'm Kinsey Becker with Oxford Development, one of the co-developers on this project as well. And we're going to bring up Jonathan Glance, our architect with LGA, to go through the presentation.
I am Jonathan Glance, architect for this project. Next slide. The team, as just described, Oxford and Steel Street are the co-developers. LGA is the architect, Langen civil engineer. Next slide. The site located situated between 28th and 27th on Railroad and backed up to Spruce Way and Alley. Staff reviewed some of the salient features of the site, including the height and the bonus points being used, setbacks and length. All meeting the requirements. Next slide. This is a review of the master plan, Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One on your left, Phase One on your right. The site, labeled site in question, weighted in the master plan there. Note that there are two parking garages, one with the hub with 590 spots and the hive 604. Those are built structures with parking and controlled by the developer. Hopper Place, the stacks, and some other future development in the lighter yellow of Phase Two. Next slide. This addresses more in depth. The proposed location, loading entrances, pedestrian entrances off 27th and 28th Street, loading behind the building, the adjacency to the parking garage. And again, proposing up to 240 units, up to 38 onsite parking, meeting the required bike requirements with bike reduction. Next slide. Some contextual slides. Hopper Place, the yards, and the two aforementioned parking garage, the hub and the hive. Next slide. This is the architectural site plan, just helping to orient you to where the proposed onsite parking would exist in the back of the building, the loading zones on either end, and again, the adjacency to the existing parking garages. Also note the new sidewalks along 27th, 28th and Railroad Street, which will be connected to the sidewalk at the hive, helping to increase pedestrian safety and comfort. Next. Unit mix will be a mix of one, two, and studio units. This is the ground floor. Units along the railroad street will have private patios elevated above the streetscape, about, sorry, the above the I'm trying to say, the sidewalk, that's the word. And the and then the entrances on 27th and 28th with common area, community area, and lots of glass highlighting those. Also, the building overhangs creating sort of a nice overhang and porch and entry sequence to those two entrances. Next. It's typical floor plan. Next slide. Elevation, which we reviewed with you last time, mix of cement board, various colors to respond to CDAP's questions, and a combination at grade of polished ground and split face mastery. Split is of the parking only, so mostly grounded and polished. Next. Yes, this shows the rear elevation, very similar to the front, but with the underground or the tuck-under parking. Excellent. This is a enlarged elevation showing in more detail where things, where proposed fiber cement and ground face, ground face and split face CMU would go. You can see it's color-coded and number-coded, but a mix of different fiber cement colors and textures to create some variety on the elevation. Next slide. This shows the sidewalk condition and the tree pits, which meet the requirements for the city as well as create some real interesting architectural language along the sidewalk. And the private courtyards for the units that face railroad. Next. This is a section illustrating that plan that we just showed you, as well as some renderings to show the entrances, some monumental stairs to encourage activity, some, lots of glass at the entrance, some vibrant colors and art at the entrance to and lighting to draw you in. And then you can see how the streetscape section addresses the sidewalk, the curb, and tree pits, as well as the elevated private balconies for the units along the along the railroad street. Next slide. There's a detail of a tree pit that's a biotension pit that's in the city, I think Hazelwood. And then a detail of it. Next slide. Day rendering. Next slide. Night rendering. Next slide. Next slide. The shadow studies that were mentioned before. Next. Next. Maybe, yep. Uh, the construction management plan. Um, local traffic on twenty seventh and twenty eighth. Um, small man, of course, remains open. Uh, there is no existing sidewalk um around on railroad. Um, you can see the site fence pretty contained. Uh, there's a partial alley closure on spruce to allow for local business access, but really there aren't any businesses that rely on spruce exclusively for ingress egress. Next. Landscape plan. Next. And the night rendering to end on. Any questions?
Okay, uh, since that concludes the presentation and this is hearing in action at this time, we open the floor for the general public uh for testimony. So if there's anyone here that would like to speak on this, uh, whether in person or online, uh, is there anyone wishing to speak regarding this? I I can't, by the way, see uh if there are.
We have no hands raised uh online.
Okay, fantastic. And it looks like no one here in the room, so uh given that uh commissioners, are there any comments or can we call uh for a vote on this particular item? Is there a motion from the floor to approve?
Oh, um, uh, Commissioner Dick has her hand up.
I'm sorry. Uh, all right, I can't see Commissioner Dick. Is that for the motion or is that for?
Uh, Commissioner Dick, you're currently muted.
Okay, I'm trying to unmute, but okay, well, never mind then. We can hear you. We can hear you.
Okay, well, I move that we approve this motion as written.
Oh, thank you so much. Do we have a second? Commissioner Mazza, thank you, and I will do roll call. Uh, Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Mazza.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Quintanilla.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz.
Aye.
Thank you, and Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so uh, motion passes. Thank you so much. Uh, good presentation, good job being on the rebound day two with technical and uh have a great rest of your day and uh good holiday season as well. You're very welcome. Um, as the room begins to clear out uh for agenda item number one, under hearing in action, we will move to agenda item number two. Reading that in now, uh, B D A dash twenty twenty four dash zero two three eight one at four thirty three Wood Street. This is that's okay. A demolition of existing building and stabilization of rear and sidewalls. This happens to be in the central business district and presenting that here this afternoon is Mr. Kinsella.
Uh, thank you. Can we just uh make sure, okay, can we get a sound check from Mr. Andrew George?
Yes, I'm here.
Great, thank you. Uh, I'll just briefly read in the case and then I'll turn it over to the applicant team to uh present. So this is an application for project development plan, B D A dash twenty twenty four dash zero two three eight one, which was filed by Andrew George on behalf of P N C Bank Nashville Association, the property owner, for a demolition of an existing structure and stabilization of the surrounding side and rear walls. This application proposes the demolition of an existing three story structure on parcel one H two three seven and construction of structural steel to stabilize the adjacent buildings on either side of the subject parcel uh at parcels one H two three five and one H two three eight. Development uh including demolition requires review and approval by the planning commission as a project development plan in the Golden Triangle zoning districts under section nine ten dot oh one dot C dot one C in the zoning code. The site is not located in within a local historic district, so review and approval by the historic review committee, uh, commission is not required. There were no requests to the zoning board of adjustment on this case. No stormwater management plan is required for this review. No Department of Mobility and Infrastructure review is required for this project. A development activities meeting was held virtually on November fourteenth, twenty twenty four with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership, the registered community organization for this area. A summary report of that uh meeting is attached to this report. The city does require that a development activities meeting occur thirty days prior to a public hearing for a development application before a board of commission. However, an R C O uh has the ability to request a waiver of that thirty day requirement. Uh, the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership did make this request for a waiver uh to enable this application to proceed before you today at today's uh December tenth hearing. Uh, under section nine twenty two dot ten dot E dot two, the planning commission shall review uh project development plan uh according to the criteria that was provided to the commissioners. That's located in that section of the zoning code. Uh, it is staff's recommendation that the planning commission of the city of Pittsburgh approve the project development plan, B D A dash twenty twenty four dash zero two three eight one based on the application filed by Andrew George on behalf of P N C Bank National Association, the property owner. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. George.
Hello, this is Andrew George, Coolak George Architects. Uh, you know, reading a little summary here of our uh our project. So over the past four and a half years, P N C has embarked in a self-funded multi-phase project to revitalize the four hundred block of Wood Street in down in the downtown business district. Through those efforts, P N C has purchased, planned and implemented extensive renovations to the existing skinny building at four forty three Forbes, the Roberts Building at four twenty nine Wood Street, the new Pittsburgh Public Safety Zone Two Station at four thirty nine Wood Street and the building located at four forty three Wood known internally to P N C as the Ox. Among those acquisitions, we also are including the building located at four thirty three Wood Street, formerly the home of Mama Lucia's Pizza. Significant effort was placed on bringing these existing structures up to code in a useful and meaningful way. The intent was to give new life to a bill to the buildings by mixing new and reused materials, creating a busier, more vibrant feel with increased security to the entire block. Four thirty three Wood Street represents the last leg of this journey, and although no less significant, presents its own set of challenges. Given the condition of the structure when it was purchased and the dimensional challenges of its size, bringing the building up to code left us with little to no usable space. Combining that with the challenges of maintaining the integrity of the wall between the adjacent D T L R building, doing any sort of full reconstruction became financially unfeasible. The design we are presenting involves the deconstruction of the floors and facade while erecting a structure that will maintain the stability and integrity of the masonry wall mentioned earlier, as well as the rear wall that is home to several utility paths for the remaining buildings. The result of this effort will provide a structurally sound, architecturally pleasing exterior accessory space to the Roberts Building. The open space will prevent permit further maintenance to the neighboring building envelopes as well as the new structure. With that, we have our presentation. And you could see a head on shot here where the Mama Lucia's used to be. And we're proposing this arched structure and steel to kind of maintain our party walls. Uh, you can move on to the next slide, please. That's kind of what I just read here. Next. Okay, so you see the dark brick building there is the Mama Lucia's building that we're talking about. Uh, the D T L R building to the right and the Roberts Building to the left. Uh, next slide, please. So we'll take down that building, maintaining the party wall to the right and left, obviously, and the rear wall will remain intact. Now you can see an interior shot here. Uh, we'll have some lighting in there. That's still to be determined, but um trying to, you know, paint the brick, parage and patch up the brick, brighten it up with some light colors and place our structure in between there. Next slide, please. Okay, so here you could see at the very bottom, the D T L R building roof and the the cream color above that with the water stains on it is the wall in question, the the party wall between those two buildings. Uh, that's actually on the P N C property. So we're going to remove that down to the height of the front of the D T L R building parapet. Uh, there's an abandoned elevator shaft to the right of the picture. And that has to remain um as it's the the neighbor intended. So we're going to brace that with the frame here and take down as much of the other party wall as we can. Next slide, please. Uh, you can see uh our floor plan at the top left and kind of like a a roof plan, if you will, on the bottom left. Sections and elevations. Right here. Next slide, please. Go to the next slide.
That's it.
That appears to be the completion.
Okay, sorry. All right.
Okay, well, given that concludes the presentation, thank you so much. Um, at this time, we open the floor for public testimony. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this?
I have a question. So um are those like mini I beams that's part of the structure? And how are they anchored to the to the ground and so the way that the the drawing is you don't need anything in the middle to stabilize that? So there won't be any pressure coming back because of the arch that's put in there?
Correct. So we are gonna, we're gonna backfill the basement that's there currently. Uh, we're gonna build our footers and piers down to where we need them as our, we have structural drawings that have already been done. Um, so that's all uh that's all supported from the foundations below, obviously. And then the I beams, yeah, will basically be a self-supporting structure and they're just there to, they're not going to put any kind of pressure back on the other buildings.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Mazza. Um, just a a double verification that nobody was online with any hand raised uh regarding this.
Yeah, no hands raised on.
Excellent, okay. Uh, no additional questions, commissioners. Quintanilla, you have a question?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Quintanilla. Um, so let me get this straight. What we're doing is we're removing the building, which I get it's actually in poor condition, but then what you're gonna leave there is gonna be in an alley. Is that correct?
Uh, it's kind of an accessory space to the Roberts Building. So it's not going to be public access or anything like that. There's an alley, like an alleyway behind this building uh that will still maintain access to through a gated door.
Uh huh. Well, there's just an alley right behind the Robert Building on the other side of facing onto Forbes. And if I'm not mistaken, those those are not some of the best spaces in general in downtown, so um, and what is sad is that we are removing a facade of a building here and now you're putting a gate rather than a facade or something that at least makes the the continuation of the experience for the pedestrians. So it seems to me that, you know, I understand you have to remove the building, but then what we're getting in return is just a gate. Is that correct?
I mean, yeah, we're for the most part, yeah, I mean, we're gonna provide that kind of visual interest in there. I don't know what P N C's exact plan is to put in there, but it's not going to be some kind of uh like utility alley.
Right. I mean, I I would have, I obviously have concerns about that just because, again, I think the one thing we don't need in downtown is, of course, is it's more areas that are becoming, you know, not very inviting and Wood Street is one that I think with the great effort that P N C has done, has made that uh that whole block actually feel much better as a pedestrian, but all of a sudden now they're removing a building and putting, you know, what it potentially is, is an alleyway, you know, um, where garbage and everything else goes in there. So I'm quite concerned about that.
Well, I don't think it's gonna end up as a like a garbage way. It's gonna be more of their accessory space, which mean like to be used as maybe like a breakout space for for the downstairs of the Roberts Building. And I don't think that the the P N C is gonna be treating that as like back of house area. That's very much front of house. It's visible from their tower. So they're not going to want that to be. Yeah. Run down or anything like that.
Right, I understand that's the intention, but at least what you're showing is a gate. It's a gate and it's into a space that is pretty much an alley. Um, you know, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, any additional comments or do we have a motion from the floor on this particular application?
Do you have one question?
Yes, Commissioner Wu.
Uh, what what is the width of the uh the old Mama Lucia's building or or uh the area that you're going to be uh um putting the structure?
Um, it's like eighteen feet.
Okay. That was it.
Hey, um, commissioners that might be uh online, uh, if there might be a question, uh, please let us know. And if not, do we have a motion from the floor on this particular application? The recommended motion is to approve uh the project development plan.
Most to do approve.
All right, Commissioner Mazza, motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Dick. I'm gonna do roll call. Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Mazza.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil.
Epstein.
All right, Commissioner Quintanilla.
No.
All right, uh, Commissioner Ruiz.
Aye.
All right, and Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
All right. Okay, so um it passes. Thank you for the presentation. Uh, happy holidays and have a good rest of your day.
Thank you, you too.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to agenda item three under hearing in action, part one. Agenda item number three is as follows, D C P dash Z D R dash twenty twenty four dash zero seven nine one five at eight hundred Fort Two Kane Boulevard. This is a demolition of one story business in the central business district. Mr. Kinsella is presenting.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Yes, this is an application for project development plan, uh, D C P dash C D R dash twenty twenty four dash zero seven nine one five, which is filed by Kathy James on behalf of the Pittsburgh Trust for Cultural Resources, the property owner, for the demolition of an existing one story structure. Uh, the applicant proposes the demolition of an existing one story structure on parcel nine N one nine eight. The applicant has indicated intentions for future use of the site upon demolition for an expansion and enhancement of the existing public space located on adjacent parcels. Those future plans are not a part uh of this project scope and will be reviewed by the planning commission at a later date. The development uh including demolition uh does require review and approval by the planning commission as a project development plan in the Golden Triangle zoning districts under section nine ten dot oh one dot C dot one C. The site is not located within a local historic district, so review and approval by the historic review commission is not required. There were no requests uh to the zoning board of adjustment for this case. There's no stormwater management plan required for this review and no Department of Mobility and Infrastructure review is required. A development activities meeting was held virtually on November fourteenth, twenty twenty four with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership, the registered organization, community organization for this area. A summary report of that meaning is attached to this report. The city uh does require that a development activities meeting occur thirty days prior to a public hearing for a development application before a board or commission. However, the R C O does have the ability to request a waiver of the thirty day requirement. Uh, in this case, the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership did request that waiver of that requirement to ensure that uh this application can proceed at today's December tenth, twenty twenty four hearing of the planning commission. Under section nine twenty two dot ten dot E dot two, the planning commission shall review our project development plan uh in accordance with the criteria in that zoning code section and that has been shared with the planning commission in this report. The Department of City Planning's staff recommendation on this on this project is that the planning commission of the city of Pittsburgh approve the project development plan, D C P dash C D R dash twenty twenty four dash zero seven nine one five based on the application filed by Kathy James on behalf of the Pittsburgh Trust for Cultural Resources, the property owner. Um, and with that, I'll uh invite the applicant team uh in person to come up and present their project.
And you should be able to use this clicker too to go to the next. Oh, excellent. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Commission. It's a pleasure to be with you.
It's a pleasure to be with you today. I am Damon Rhodes with Larson Design Group, project engineers for the demolition of the Goodyear Building, eight hundred Fort Duquesne Boulevard. Joining me today on behalf of the Pittsburgh Cultural Trust are the owner's representative team of Stephen Needham from VVA and Nicole Gray Carr from CD Squared. Moving right into it, I will be talking about the context, the demolition of the building in the context of the overall Eighth Street Civic Civic space being developed by the Pittsburgh Cultural Trust. And as Paul mentioned, that that's not before you today. Nonetheless, the overall plan after the demolition of the building at eight hundred Fort Duquesne Boulevard will be the development of the Eighth Street Civic Civic space shown on the project map. Before you now bounded essentially by Seventh Street, Ninth Street, Penn Avenue and Fort Duquesne Boulevard. To get to this point, the Pittsburgh Cultural Trust is engaged in significant public outreach, both online with surveys and in person with events such as the public outreach event schedule that was held on August second, twenty twenty four. Continuing on with another view of the future space, we can say now, not not necessarily approximately four acres, but three point six two acres will be redeveloped into the Eighth Street Civic Space. You can see a little bit there, the good, the existing Goodyear Building at eight hundred Fort Duquesne Boulevard. Oops, getting a little. There we go. And here we are on Penn Avenue, essentially today, looking at the existing Eighth Street backyard. And in the background, there is eight hundred Fort Duquesne Boulevard, the existing Goodyear Building that is proposed to be demolished. Here's the view from the corner essentially of Seventh Street and Fort Duquesne Boulevard. For the record, that is a real blue Pittsburgh sky, so we certainly like that photo a lot. The existing uses of the backyard, many of you are familiar with recreational activities such as pickleball, concerts and music events. And certainly as a staging and activity area for the Three Rivers Arts Festival. Here, the the red dashed box on the top of the page represents the Goodyear Building that is proposed to be demolished. Essentially in the central block between Eighth Street and Ninth Street along Fort Duquesne Boulevard. And here is the representation of the future civic space. And as you can see, essentially right in the middle is the the Goodyear Building that will be demolished. Just a few highlights of the future of the space. We we have the large. Stage zone where concerts can be viewed. A remaining backyard zone along Penn Avenue for activities. A recreated Eighth Street as a garden walk. And then a flex zone down at the corner of Seventh and Fourth Duquesne Boulevard for potential future activities. You can also see on the bottom, a slight rise in the topography for both drainage purposes and activities on the future site. Again, another view with Fort Duquesne Boulevard being on the right, Penn Avenue on the left. Rendering is of the Cultural Commons Lawn in the future stage. A view looking down the Eighth Street Garden Walk. And again, improvements to the site once the building are gone. One of the assets of the site redevelopment will be taking an essentially very hardscape space, creating a lot of permeable surface in the park along with rain gardens and the associated stormwater design that we're working on in conjunction with the Allegheny County Conservation District in the city of Pittsburgh. So that is our look at what will occur with the approval of the demolition of the Goodyear Building. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. At this time, we open the floor for public testimony. That would be here in person and both online. Help me out, is there anyone online?
No hands raised online.
Fantastic, thank you so much. Nobody's running up here either, no, just joking. Thank you, commissioners, at this time. Recommended motion is to approve the project development plan, is there a motion?
Sure.
What's what's the plan on remediation of the property? So that building's been there for a long time. What about asbestos? What about gasoline products, oil, everything, tires, all those sort of things that are gonna be on that property? What is your plan for that?
Yep, and I'll let Steve Needham from VVA tell you about that, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Needham, I represent the trust as the project manager. So we're in the process now. Goodyear leases the building from the trust. They have an obligation on the lease to leave a sort of clean building. By the time they leave, we're in the process working with them. We've also looked at the whole site. We're doing some coring and drilling, working with environmental engineers. We haven't found any big surprises that you wouldn't expect in an urban area. But all of the materials that generate from that building are obligated to be cleaned and gone by April, which is when we hope to demo the building.
Thank you.
Okay, answers your question. Commissioners, are there any additional questions before motion?
Yeah, I have the same question as Commissioner Mazza.
Very good. Commissioners online, are there any questions prior to a request for a motion? Do we have a motion? Thank you, Commissioner Kintonia, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Woo. And we'll do roll call. Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Mazza.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Kintonia.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Woo. All right, thank you so much. Okay, so the motion passes, thank you so much. Thank you for coming, have a great rest of your day and happy holidays. All right, we are now leaving part one of hearing and action for today. We will move forward to. Part two, hearing and action, and we will. Yes.
Oh, it's not two o'clock yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies, we have six minutes left. Prior to, so at this time, since there is a little bit of a delay here, commissioners, if you might need to use the restroom or, you know, get something. I see a number of people have come in the room, including Santa. I hope you've got some candy canes, no, I'm just joking. So we'll resume at two PM, which is now five minutes away. I just want to verify that commissioners online and the court reporter are capable of hearing us. Is that accurate?
We can hear you.
And yes, from the court reporter.
Thank you so very much, so then we can go ahead and begin. So I'd like to welcome everyone, hello to all of you beautiful people. We are at part two of hearing and action today. One of the things that I wanted to note prior to moving on is that we have received some correspondence regarding homelessness. And if you are here for that, please note that that will not be on today's agenda at all. So I hope you haven't made a trip for that, but if you have, I'm just gonna let you know that upfront. And given that we've gotten at least that information out there, I'm gonna go ahead and start. We are on agenda item E. For today, December ten, twenty twenty four. And we are at the hearing and action portion of the meeting, which means we hear the cases. Then we open the floor for public testimony. Then after public testimony occurs, then commission gets to deliberate on the matter. So we'll go ahead and proceed. Again, agenda item E under hearing and action, part two. The first item up is number four, and that is as follows. DCP dash MPZC dash twenty twenty four dash zero zero two two four at forty seven twenty Fifth Avenue. This is Central Catholic High School Institutional Master Plan in the Squirrel Hill neighborhood. And Mr. Kinsella is going to present.
Thank you, Chair Burton Falk. Yes, this is a request for approval of an institutional master plan or an IMP that was submitted by Central Catholic High School for its existing campus in the Squirrel Hill North neighborhood. This is the first IMP for that campus. The Central Catholic High School campus consists of two parcels, fifty two J two sixty four and fifty two J one eighteen. And generally spans along Fifth Avenue to the north to South Neville, South Neville Street on the south and western portions. There is a port, there's a parcel on the corner of Fifth Avenue and South Neville Street that is not owned by the high school. And there's no expansion of the EMI district proposed and no street vacations proposed as a part of this application. The EMI district allows for uses associated with educational and medical institutional uses as well as a number of accessory uses in accordance with an approved institutional master plan. With limited exceptions, the institutional master plan must be submitted and approved prior to any development within an EMI district. The IMP for Central Catholic High School campus identifies three new projects within the ten year development window. Those include the renovations to the Brothers Residence, a new three story student center with underground parking and a bridge, in a pedestrian bridge to connect the student center to the quad and renovations to the main building on campus. The IMP was reviewed by Department of City Planning staff and Central Catholic addressed staff comments, including the clearance underneath the proposed pedestrian bridge, the proposed spectator seating, shuttle and van parking, which are proposed on the Carnegie Mellon University property. The applicant provided indication that they had received permission from CMU to utilize their property for these purposes. And the design of the student center building and how. Excuse me, how the building engages and connects with the campus and neighbors has been addressed. The transportation impact study that was submitted along with this plan was reviewed and approved by the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. Property owners within one hundred and fifty feet of the proposed institutional master plan area were notified of the proposal and notices were also posted in the area. And onsite notices were included in accordance with section nine twenty two dot O one dot C. The Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition, or SHOK, is the registered community organization for the Squirrel Hill North neighborhood where the Central Catholic High School is located. They did host a joint development activities meeting with with themselves, as well as the Oakland Business Improvement District or OBID. That meeting occurred on October thirtieth, twenty twenty four. A copy of that development activities meeting is is attached to this report. Per section nine twenty two dot twelve dot D, the planning commission shall recommend to city council to approve, approve with conditions, approve in part, deny or deny in part the application for the IMP. An institutional master plan is intended to provide flexibility for a large institution, which is not possible on a lot by lot basis, providing a level of understanding to both the public as well as the the body, the governing body about potential growth of the institution. And the provisions of the master plan are intended to protect the integrity of adjacent neighborhoods, provide a growing continuing source of employment, create attractive and efficient urban environments and protect sensitive portions of natural and manmade environment. It is the Department of City Planning's recommended motion that the that the planning commission make a positive recommendation to city council on the institutional master plan as submitted by Central Catholic High School. And with that, I'll invite the applicant team to come up and introduce themselves and start their presentation.
Good afternoon, everyone, I'm Mike Smith, I'm an architect with HDG Architects.
Good afternoon, my name is Matthew Stossel, I'm the president at Central Catholic High School.
Matt will walk us through here the first couple slides of the master plan.
For those unfamiliar with Central Catholic.
The one thing that was sort of the glaring omission in that was we really had never improved our athletic facilities aside from the gymnasium that was constructed in 1978, which now is, has served its useful time and needs upgrading. What we found in our outreach to our community was the desire to renovate the Brothers Residence for the Christian Brothers community that has served the school for nearly 100 years. So that is a little bit more comfortable for them. They take a vow of poverty, but that goes to a certain extent. And I think we can be better to them and for them. The second piece was to replace our gymnasium, which is the reason why really we're here as far as the institutional master planning process goes. But what we heard from our community was that it can't just be a gym, you know, that it needs to service those things. And we have, a lot of our students are involved in athletic activities, but it needs to be a little bit more than that. And then also then, once that is done, hopefully have the ability to make some upgrades in our main building and general site improvements around campus for campus safety. And then that led us into, which led us into this process, which we learned about that we had to do an institutional master plan, which is why we're here.
So Phase One, which is actually under construction right now, involves an interior renovation of this 100-year-old building to create better bedroom spaces for the Christian Brothers. They will, their entire floor will be updated and upgraded. And they will continue to live in this building. There won't be additional Christians, Christian Brothers brought to campus. It'll just be to maintain and provide better living spaces for the ones that currently live there. We also will be adding an elevator, ramps, chairlifts, making the building fully handicap compliant. And then with the remaining space in the building on the first floor and in the basement level, administrative offices that are kind of scattered about the main building will be consolidated into their own pod or floor in the Brothers Residence, so they can be grouped together. Phase Two, which is the new student center project, would start with demolishing the existing gymnasium. You can see in red here on the screen that the new student center would be located in a very similar location to where the existing gymnasium would be. So the first step, obviously, then would be to demolish the existing gymnasium. The new building would consist of a new gymnasium, new locker rooms, new weight room, new lecture classroom, a regular typical classroom, moving the kitchen and cafeteria out of the main building and over to the new student center building, providing, putting it in a space where it can have ample natural light and allow the students to really experience this new student center building more. And then there will also be some administrative offices inside the building. As mentioned earlier, there will also be a pedestrian bridge connecting the kind of the quadrangle area that's just south of the main building. That area is about one story higher than the parking lot, so it would allow the students to get to the new building without having to walk downstairs and across the driveway there. They could stay out of the traffic and just walk across to the new building. And then lastly, as the last bullet states there, there will be a new parking garage. Underneath that garage would be access from Neville Street. It would be one story below what the main drive there and the turf field level are at. The purpose of the parking garage is really just to replace the parking spaces that were eliminated by the building taking up part of the parking lot. So the goal was to have, to have a, you know, the same number of parking spots when we're done with this project as they have today. Oops, I went the wrong. This slide shows a few conceptual renderings of what the building could look like. The image on the bottom right is the existing main building, the existing 100-year-old main building. And the idea for the new student center would be to use some of the concepts that are shown in the original building, the masonry building, lots of brick, cast stone, glass, you know, try to have it honor the historic architecture of the original building. And then finally, Phase Three, this would be to go into the main building and to add some HVAC improvements to the third and fourth floor, add a new elevator to the building, address some other accessibility concerns. And then, as a result of moving some spaces out of the main building and into the brothers' house and out of the main building and into the new student center, there will be some extra space in the main building that will be able to be reconfigured back into classrooms as they were originally designed. And then finally, the last part of Phase Three would be to add some security improvements to the campus, some fencing, address the condition of the Fifth Avenue retaining wall, and overall improve site security. So that's the overview of the institutional master plan.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation, very thorough. At this time, we do open the floor for public testimony for those that wish to speak, both in person and online. And then we move it over to Commission. So is there anyone here that would like to speak regarding this item? I don't want to miss anybody. Don't all run up at one time. And might there be anyone online?
Yes, we have one hand raised online.
Thank you.
Mr. Bob Reppe, you are able to unmute and provide your testimony. Please state your name for the record.
Hi there.
Hi there. Can you guys hear me? Can you all hear me okay?
We can. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for letting me speak. Bob Reppe, university architect, Carnegie Mellon University, 5,000 Forbes Avenue, here to support, on behalf of the university, to support our neighbors and our partners at Central Catholic High School in their institutional master plan and their projects. We've worked long and hard. We've got a long, long, strong, excellent working relationship and academic relationship with Central Catholic, and we're excited to see them move forward with their projects. They have been meeting with us regularly as an update on what their proposals are, and we are in full support of them and encourage the Commission to vote to recommend approval of their master plan.
Thank you so much, Mr. Reppe.
Welcome. Thank you.
Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you.
Are there any other hand?
There are no other hands raised.
Thank you so much. Okay, Commissioner.
We just got a hand there.
Oh, we did? Okay.
Someone under the name of Title. T-I-T-L-E. You can unmute and provide your testimony.
Hello, welcome. You may have to unmute. Good afternoon. We're unable to hear you.
Aboriginal American Matriarch, you can unmute yourself. You have three minutes to provide your testimony.
Might you put something in the chat so that we know that you were attempting to speak, please and thank you?
I don't think they have the ability to put anything in the chat.
Oh. Do you want to move to Commissioner comments and then? Yeah, if there's nothing that we can do on our end, let's try to work through it on your side. At this time, we'll move to Commissioners. Commissioners, are there questions, comments on our end, both here and Commissioners online? No? All right. Still no luck on your end? Okay. All right. So Commissioners, at this time, what's before us is a positive recommendation to Council. Might we have a motion from the floor? Commissioner Dick? Motion?
Second.
Commissioner Cantonia, second? And I'll go ahead and do roll call. Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Dick? Aye.
Yes.
Very good. Commissioner Mazza? Thank you. Commissioner O'Neill?
Abstain.
Thank you. Commissioner Cantonia?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruiz?
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so the motion passes. Thank you so much for the presentation. Have a good rest of your day and a good holiday. Okay, we are moving on under Hearing and Action, Part Two, to item number five, which is Transit Oriented Development Zoning Map Amendments. This will cover Polish Hill, Lower Lawrenceville, Sheridan, Crafton Heights, Beltsuver, Mount Washington Neighborhoods. Presenting that here this afternoon will be Mr. Dash and Keith Portugal.
Thank you, Commissioners. Andrew Dash, Deputy Director of City Planning. What we are here to present as the first of two items, which are meant to be an implementation, zoning change is meant to be an implementation of the Housing Needs Assessment. You know, this first one is a series of map amendments across, you know, three areas within the walk shed of three transit stations in the city. And as I noted, all of this does come from the city's housing needs assessment. So, you know, what is the housing needs assessment? The housing needs assessment, there is a QR code that is on the screen to download the full document, is a housing study that was finalized in 2022. This was really intended to provide a comprehensive understanding of the city, its housing needs, its housing conditions, and be a data-driven resource to guide policy decisions. So, you know, talk about these amendments, really these amendments are, you know, as recommendations and implementation from that report. So, you know, just to very briefly kind of go over some of the key findings, of which we did, you know, kind of addressing three categories of needs, those of people, those of housing, and those of neighborhoods. So, understanding the needs of city residents, including how housing issues are affecting families and how it relates to larger trends, understanding the city's housing stock, so condition and vacancy of our existing housing, the affordability of housing, understanding the current investments that are going on and have gone on in the city's housing stock, and understanding the needs of the city's neighborhoods. So, how the housing affects the health of neighborhoods, how neighborhoods are changing because of these housing-related issues. I hear you. We have a lot to go through, and I will try to make sure that I'm kind of clear on what's being presented. The recommendations that came from the Housing Needs Assessment focused on three categories, two of which we will not be focusing on today, being subsidy and tenants' rights. So there are recommendations in the Housing Needs Assessment to address, you know, both of those things as well. And there are lots of people in the city that are working on those. In addition, or instead of, in some cases, the Department of City Planning. But the zoning amendments that we're bringing to you are really focused around these land use policies. And so, understanding where housing is located, what housing looks like, how much housing is built, you know, is really the focus of these amendments. And again, you know, these amendments are really focused, hold on, I skipped twice, to increase housing supply and facilitate a better orientation of density around transit in form of transit-oriented development. We are talking about the map amendments as far as transit-oriented development as a part of this presentation, but we will be talking very shortly around amendments, text amendments to the zoning code that will cover the introduction of accessory dwelling units, a reform to the city's parking code, changes to, and a new inclusionary zoning policy, as well as changes to our minimum lot size standards. And so, focusing on transit-oriented development, there has been a series of public outreach that has occurred over the last year while we've been in the process of developing these recommendations. You know, out of those, you know, most of those have happened, you know, in the summer and fall of this year, meeting with organizations in and around the three transit stations that the city is proposing as this initial round of rezonings, and having development activities meetings in each of those neighborhoods as well. And so, having a joint development activities meeting with the Beltsuver and Mount Washington community groups in and around the proposal that we have for South Hills Junction, or the walk shed around South Hills Junction. We had a meeting with the, a development activities meeting with the Polish Hill Civic Association around the rezonings that are being proposed for the walk shed around Heron Station. And we had development activities meeting with Jasmine Irie Homes, which is the registered community organization for the Sheridan neighborhood as a part of proposed rezonings, you know, that are around Sheridan Station. We do and have had conversations with elected officials, with city council members, and with organizations. You know, as we talk about next steps and where these go, do you anticipate having additional meetings, you know, as this goes, you know, potentially from the Planning Commission to City Council? the affordability of housing, understanding the current investments that are going on and have gone on in the city's housing stock, and understanding the needs of the city's neighborhoods. So, how the housing affects the health of neighborhoods, how neighborhoods are changing because of these housing-related issues. I hear you. We have a lot to go through, and I will try to make sure that I'm kind of clear on what's being presented. The recommendations that came from the Housing Needs Assessment focused on three categories, two of which we will not be focusing on today, being subsidy and tenants' rights. So, there are recommendations in the Housing Needs Assessment to address, you know, both of those things as well. And there are lots of people in the city that are working on those. In addition, or instead of, in some cases, the Department of City Planning. But the zoning amendments that we're bringing to you are really focused around these land use policies. And so, understanding where housing is located, what housing looks like, how much housing is built, you know, is really the focus of these amendments. And again, you know, these amendments are really focused up, well, I skipped twice, to increase housing supply and facilitate a better orientation of density around transit in form of transit-oriented development. We are talking about the map amendments as far as transit-oriented development as a part of this presentation, but we will be talking very shortly around amendments, text amendments to the zoning code that will cover the introduction of accessory dwelling units, a reform to the city's parking code, changes to and a new inclusionary zoning policy, as well as changes to our minimum lot size standards. And so, focusing on transit-oriented development. There has been a series of public outreach that has occurred over the last year while we've been in the process of developing these recommendations. You know, out of those, you know, most of those have happened, you know, in the summer and fall of this year, meeting with organizations in and around the three transit stations that the city is proposing as this initial round of rezonings. And having development activities meetings in each of those neighborhoods as well. And so, having a joint development activities meeting with the Beltsuver and Mount Washington community groups in and around the proposal that we have for South Hills Junction, or the walk shed around South Hills Junction. We had a meeting with the development activities meeting with the Polish Hill Civic Association around the rezonings that are being proposed for the walk shed around Heron Station. And we had development activities meeting in with Jasmine Iry Homes, which is the Register Community Organization for the Sheridan Neighborhood as a part of proposed rezonings, you know, that are around Sheridan Station. We do and have had conversations with elected officials, with city council members, and with organizations. You know, as we talk about next steps and where these go, do you anticipate having additional meetings, you know, as this goes, you know, potentially from the Planning Commission to City Council? So, and again, that total, outside of those three development activities meetings, we had 11 additional meetings with the community discussing these. This does not include kind of one-on-ones with members of our Register Community Organizations. These were meetings that were either public meetings or meetings with organizations and their boards. From those development activities meetings, we did hear a lot. We will try to summarize. There is a lot of correspondence. You know, that came to you all as the commission, in addition to what we heard from those development activities meetings and the reports for all three of those development activities meetings were, you know, given to the commission as a part of the record. So, you know, there was, you know, definitely some support, you know, for the idea of additional housing and additional opportunities for housing near transit. There's been a lot of engagement from both the Housing Needs Assessment and some of the work that we'll speak in a little bit, you know, later around things that Pittsburgh Regional Transit has done, some of their stationary planning. You know, at the same time, there are some concerns about what changes development will bring. And so, you know, there is some, you know, question or concern around, you know, what displacement, you know, possibilities or, you know, or changes could make relative to new housing development. Some concerns, and we'll speak through this a little bit more as we get through the proposal around some of the potential environmental impact to the zoning changes, as well as, you know, questions of community character relative to density, and a request for continued community input opportunities, not only with the zoning map changes, but just an understanding, and there's been a lot of discussion around what the development review process is, and as many of those projects, if they were to be developed, would have to come back through Planning Commission and the Development Activities Meeting process. You know, I think, you know, again, you know, there were, you know, support for a lot of the benefits, you know, the opportunity to create greater affordability through increased development and density. You know, looking at, you know, some, you know, suggestions for additional rezoning efforts, for additional stations beyond this. Support for a lot of the community organizations and the Register Community Organizations in the process there, which we'll speak to more specifically, I think, in the Sheridan example. And some requests for other improvements that might be following along and be, you know, with additional development. In addition, we did submit, you know, the comments that were from Engage P G H. Here, there was a lot of, you know, kind of overall support for transit-oriented development and doing transit-oriented development and upzoning around transit stations. At the same time, there were some specific questions around specific sites, and I'd say that those were, you know, primarily at least by people who had noted that they were residents in or around a number of these sites, and we will kind of talk through that. But, you know, a lot of, you know, a lot of the, many people were requesting an even more aggressive approach than the city was taking, or more blanket. I think what we've tried to do, and we'll talk through our methodology as to what we're proposing and why we're proposing it, was to take a more targeted approach to rezoning certain properties. So, you know, where is all of this coming from? You know, transit-oriented development, you know, overall as a concept is really the idea that we are putting density and transit-accessible neighborhoods in and around the walk shed of our major transit facilities. So, you know, we, as a follow-up from the Housing Needs Assessment, did transit-oriented development analysis, looking at all of the busway and the T stops and the areas within a half-mile walk shed of that. Today, only 37% of the land within those boundaries is actually zoned to allow multifamily development. Not by, you know, not only by right, but in some cases by special exception, or, you know, or otherwise. So, really, you know, the goal of this effort overall is to amend the zoning that is around these transit stations to allow for more multifamily development and expand the opportunities for that to happen by right without having to go to the zoning board for special exceptions or variances. Benefits, you know, are, you know, obviously creating opportunities for people who do not presently have a vehicle or who choose not to have a vehicle, really being able to align density with our transit infrastructure and being able to support that transit. You know, creating, you know, denser places that allow for third spaces and other kind of, you know, interactions, you know, not only with the transit, but with the other aspects of the development itself, and looking at this as a component of sustainable growth. So now, we're going to jump through the three stations and the individual changes that are being proposed as a part of this amendment. And so, what we did as a part of the TOD analysis was to look at the areas within that half-mile walk shed of each of these three stations. Look at environmental issues. When we said 37% of the land, you know, is available for multifamily development, we don't assume that out of this process that that number will be 100, because there are environmental issues that need to be addressed. And so, we did take a look at floodplains, at landslide-prone areas, at steep slope areas. And when we talk about that for each of these stations, to be clear, there are overlay districts that still, even in areas that may be landslide-prone or have steep slopes, will still have potentially additional requirements that will apply relative to, you know, if there are areas that have, you know, concerns around landslide. For example, you know, there are geotechnical reviews that are in the city's Landside L S O, which is our landslide-prone overlay district, as well as in our S S O, which is our steep slope overlay district, that do require additional process in some cases, and additional reviews and environmental reviews for any areas that may be developed that are in any of those locations. So, you know, as a part of this analysis, we looked at property ownership, obviously, where there are opportunities where public entities own property, that there is, you know, kind of greater opportunity for the city to work with partners to potentially develop those properties, and looking at the size of properties to understand which properties, you know, and which areas around these stations are better candidates for redevelopment. So, we'll start with Heron Station. So, Heron Station is a station on the east busway. Within that half-mile walk shed, there are 217 acres of land. In the station itself is in Polish Hill, but the rezonings that are being proposed are not solely in Polish Hill. They are also in the Strip District of Lawrenceville, in the wider station area. Only about 25%, about a quarter of those properties, allow multifamily development by right. There is an additional area that is zoned urban industrial primarily in the Strip District and Lower Lawrenceville that allows it by special exception. You'll see there are obviously some environmental issues and concerns to address here, you know, relative to landslide-prone or steep slope areas that are in and around the walk shed of Heron Station. You know, those landslide-prone and steep slope areas, looking at, as we did the analysis on this, there is a lot of overlap. Most of that area that's in steep slope is also in a landslide-prone area. You know, which again, as I noted, really does, you know, then, you know, trigger the L S O and S S O requirements. This not only came from the Housing Needs Assessment, but there was additional work that was done in advance of this, you know, that that did lead to us identifying Heron Station as a place for early action, including the stationary area plan done by Pittsburgh Regional Transit. So, you know, as a recommendation of that stationary area plan, it does recommend that the city look at making zoning changes around, especially in the area around or across the street from the transit station along Ruthven and Heron, which we will note as one of the sites, you know, shortly. So, this is the present zoning map. You know, again, you see that, you know, the station, although a little bit tough to see, is at a dot, you know, straight in the center there, you know, in the Polish Hill neighborhood, near the boundary of the Strip District. There is a lot of urban industrial. There are some areas of, you know, of orange that we'll talk through that are presently RM-zoned, which is our multi-unit residential district. There are also areas like the Riverfront Industrial Mix Use District that do allow for multifamily development as well. So, with that, there are a series of proposals and sites that we will walk through, you know, kind of one at a time here, you know, that are shown here on the map. You know, two of those are in the Polish Hill neighborhood. One is to rezone the area around Ruthven and Heron, the intersection directly across the street from the station, from Hillside to the Residential Mixed Use District, R M U, and an area along Bigelow Boulevard and Bethaven Street that is presently zoned R M, multi-unit residential. And we want to propose changing that to R M U, and we'll discuss the reason that although that is in a multifamily district already, we'll talk about the reason, you know, why we're looking to make that change. There are, you know, a couple of locations in the Lower Lawrenceville and Strip District areas as well. So, looking at a couple of, handful of parcels on Liberty Avenue near 37th Street, and looking at some blocks along Smallman Street between 34th and 36th, you know, where we are proposing to rezone those to R M U and Riv I M U respectively. And then a fifth rezoning, which is really just slightly outside of the walk shed of the area, but as we were looking at this, which is rezoning the St. Augustine Manor, really to reflect the uses that are going on there and to allow them as they look to do work on that site, be able to keep up their property, that they are, you know, in greater legal conformance of the zoning code as a part of that. So, trying to walk through the sites, you know, this first one is Ruthven and Heron. These are the parcels that are shown in red that are being proposed for rezoning. We do, in the Residential Mixed Use District, we'll talk about this for all three sites. There is a maximum height that people can do without performance points, so the maximum they can do without any bonuses is 40 feet. The performance point system, and, you know, to, you know, give a little bit of a primer since we have a lot of people here, you know, are additional bonuses that people can receive for going above and beyond in places like energy or stormwater or affordable housing or other to get additional height. So, the maximum height that they could receive, if they, you know, if they maxed out bonuses, would be 90 feet in those areas. We'll talk about the height reduction zone. This occurs for areas that are adjacent to, you know, usually lower-density zoning districts that do require buildings to that first 20 feet adjacent to those other zoning districts to be restricted, to have a lower height, so that, you know, we kind of approach and have more of a transition of density. And so, you know, we'll see that at a lot of, on many of these sites, so I'm not going to kind of repeat myself over and over on it, but, you know, we do have that height reduction zone that applies in this location adjacent to the Hillside and our two districts. So, what does that mean? You know, we, you know, we looked at development in the neighborhood, even going out and maxing out on all of those bonuses. There is a precedent for that maximum height, you know, in the neighborhood presently, you know, with the John Paul Plaza Apartments. You know, so even at the maximum height, this is something that we see, you know, in and adjacent to the walk shed in the area. And what could this look like? And so, you know, we did, and this is not a development proposal, to be very clear. This is solely to try to illustrate what potentially the possibilities are here. You know, the present zoning is Hillside. That does allow for development of attached row homes. You know, showing that, you know, with this proposed rezoning, it could be a more dense version of townhomes that could potentially be on this site. It could be mid-rise apartments that could be on the site that could increase density. It could be, if we're maxing out the site, you know, the maximum amount of, you know, of development that could happen on the site would be around 130 units. And, you know, so, just kind of, you know, again, kind of taking, you know, the site into consideration as well as, you know, what the potential new zoning is. Again, not a development proposal, just an illustration to try to help explain what these changes could potentially mean. The next site, we're going to stay in Polish Hill and move to the Bigelow Boulevard and Bethaven Street site. This is the site that is presently zoned residential multi-unit, so it is already zoned where it allows for apartment use for multifamily development. We are proposing a change to residential mixed use. The reason is for the site, in looking at the sites themselves, the setback requirements in the moderate-density part of the residential multi-unit does become rather restrictive towards the opportunity to develop these sites, in that it would require these sites to go for variances. You know, I think ones that, you know, obviously, not being a land use attorney, but, you know, get to, you know, potentially, you know, get to the criteria of, you know, of, you know, of what requires a variance because of the shape of these lots and the size of these lots versus the setback requirements that the present zoning has on it. So, you know, again, similarly, the height here would be 40 feet as a maximum, you know, if they're not going for any bonuses through the performance point system, up to 60 feet. We do see that, you know, within blocks from the site, you know, with, you know, with this, you know, former school building on Pallona Street. And similarly, Site One, you know, we did show, you know, kind of an illustration of what this potentially looked like, you know, where these sites to be rezone, you know, could have some, you know, kind of contextual, you know, infill that at the maximum height would get up to additional 27 units. So, looking from the station itself, you can see the, you know, kind of Ruthven-Heron, you know, block enassing, you know, in the foreground with the Bethaven-Bigelow stretch in the background, looking at the sites and the topography. The second sites and the other sites, and we'll go a little bit more quickly through these, you know, are three parcels at Liberty and 37th. These are non-residential parcels presently that are adjacent to row house developments. We are proposing a change to that to residential mixed use with a maximum height of 90 feet with bonuses, 40 feet without. We do see some precedent, you know, within a few blocks of this site with newer development that has occurred as well. Fourth site is one that is a change from urban industrial to the Riv I M U, Riverfront Industrial Mixed Use. We do see that these blocks, you know, the properties directly to the east, or I'm sorry, to the west and south of those properties, you know, are zoned the Riv I M U, so it is extending, you know, that Riv I M U across these two blocks. And this shows, you know, again, not a development proposal, but just an illustration of what that would look like, you know, as a maximum build-out. You know, which on those blocks would be around 300 units. And the fifth site, like we said, is rezoning St. Augustine and St. Augustine Plaza to match the units of the uses that currently exist on that. You know, what we heard through the process relative to Heron Station, you know, I think there was some concern relative to parcels zoned Hillside and whether geological testing will be conducted. Again, as I said, the S S O and L S O, the landslide and steep slope overlays do still apply on any places where there might be slopes over 25% or there might be those landslide-prone areas. You know, so, you know, do want to make sure that that's not, whether properties are zoned Hillside or whether they're zoned something else, those things still apply. Concern for the current neighborhood character, you know, I think we heard this a little bit more around the Bigelow-Bethaven site. I would note that that is a site that is presently zoned multi-unit residential. Question around parking and what the concerns around, you know, what new development, you know, might have for parking changes or, you know, additional vehicles in the neighborhood. I'd say we did hear support for additional housing around transit from a number of folks, you know, both in the community and more broadly through Engage P G H. You know, a desire for continued community input and suggestions for additional rezoning. Yeah, I'd say those rezonings were especially as we try to look at some of the UI districts in Lower Lawrenceville. We chose at this time not to do that because there are obviously a lot of light industrial, industrial uses in those areas. And so, you know, really think that's going to take a little bit greater planning for us to be able to make, suggest further changes to some of those other areas of urban industrial. So, that concludes Heron Station, and I'm going to turn it over to Keith Portugal, and he's going to walk through South Hills Junction and Sheridan Station.
Thank you, Andrew. Good afternoon, everyone, commissioners and fellow residents. Thanks for hanging in there. I'll try to be as efficient as possible and thorough with the next slides. So, similar to Heron Station, South Hills Junction by the numbers, we have nearly 230 acres of land within a half-mile of the walk, sorry, walk shed of the station. The walk shed primarily consisting of Mount Washington and Beltsuver, a little bit of Allentown as well. Of the three stations, this one has the least amount of multifamily in 13 acres or 5.7% of the walk shed. You'll see a pattern. We'll always have the environmental issues in here as well, but we have some. But we have some landslide prone areas at about 34.7 acres and steep slope areas in about 44.6 acres with overlap between the two. This was another station that Pittsburgh Regional Transit had created a stationary plan for. So they were out in the community prior to 2021, and they finalized the stationary plan in 2021 with a lot of the recommendations that we have been suggesting or that we will show shortly. With it being South Hills Junction, there's a lot of potential for meaningful development. It is the confluence of three of the T-lines, the red, the green, red, gray, or sorry, and blue, as well as some bus lines. Here's a map of the walk shed. As you can see, well, you can't see the little dot there, but within the park area is the center of the walk shed. And then that includes PRT property with the station itself. Mostly two-unit residential and single-family residential in the area. Another view of the walk shed with a few sites equally in Mount Washington up top and Belts Hoover at the bottom with the yellow showcasing PRT property and South Hills Junction itself. And so I'll walk through those recommendations. The first is South Hills Junction itself and the PRT property, which is all in the pink there. It's about six parcels that we want to change from park to residential mixed-use. Similarly, as the previous station, we have a maximum height of 40 feet without performance points with a max height of 90 feet using performance points as well as a height reduction zone adjacent to R1 and R2 zones at 60 feet maximum. There is a height precedence, which is the Belts Hoover Elementary School, a few blocks south of the station. So again, the proposed max height is 90 and the elementary school is around that height as well. Sorry, one moment. And again, this is not a development application, but if we were to max out the or if we, if the changes were, we are proposing to RMU pass and we max out the height and density, then this is something that could occur on PRT property. If you look to the northeast of this or the upper right corner, those are townhomes. Those should be more in line with the homes close by. But when you are on the purity property itself, it could potentially be dense, large apartments. I forget how many could fit in there, but in the bottom in the orange is also potential for retail. And to round out this first site, because we're changing everything from park to RMU potentially, this last site is park, but it's privately owned. So we want to change it to R1 DH to match the rest of the surrounding zoning. Second site is South Hills Retirement Residence itself. It is a residential planned unit development or RP district. We wish to change that to residential mixed-use. And again, potentially after residential mixed-use with max height, we could have something similar to the South Hills Retirement Residence mirroring its, that's what you see in the image to the right. So it wouldn't be anything new or out of character. That would be in its current parking or one of the current parking spaces. There's more to the north as well for parking. Max height without performance points, 40 feet with performance, performance points, 90 feet and height reduction zone of 60 feet. And the high precedence is South Hills Retirement Residence itself at 90 feet. Moving down into Belts Hoover, we have two sites, Site Three and Site Four. We are proposing the extension of the local neighborhood commercial district. Currently, it is zoned two-unit residential on either side. This first site is Montooth Climax, Haberman and Warrington. And the next site is bounded by Vincent Industry, Curtin and Climax. Again, both of them going from two-unit residential to local neighborhood commercial, just an extension of the current local neighborhood commercial in the area. And here's a series of images showcasing the different levels. Minimum is the top left where it's townhomes. Bottom left are walk-up apartments, the medium density and max density is the larger image to the right with the large apartment building. And in talking with Belts Hoover and Mount Washington, we heard similar concerns as well as similar support. There is general support for improvement of the community and additional input into the community funding. And that the hope that if there is density in development, it may slow down traffic on Warrington itself, which people note is or can be dangerous to cross to get to the station. But of course, there's concern over displacement caused by this development. We've heard that in Belts Hoover, Knoxville, and I think a few other of the Hilltop communities. The concern being it doesn't, they don't want it to be like the next, I guess, like East Liberty or anything of that nature. So that has prompted us to look at PRT's work and potentially do a equitable transit-oriented development policy that we are in the beginning stages of looking at. There's concern for the types of businesses that might come. So if this does pass through and the LNC is extended and the RMU is put in place, then the community would want to ensure that the businesses that come are ones that they would want there. Also a suggestion for neighborhood residents to have the first choice of the rezoned parcels. We're also looking at continued community involvements in future rezoning. And finally, desire for first mile, last mile facilities to help connect South Hills Junction to the rest of the community so that there's road safety considerations along Warrington. So that would be like crosswalks or traffic calming. That is it for South Hills Junction. We'll move on to Sheridan Station. By the numbers, 249.5 acres of land within the walk shed. It is mostly in Sheridan, but there's a small portion of Crafton Heights included in this walk shed. There are 39.5 acres allowed with multiple family by right. And in another 23.5 acres that allow special exception being urban industrial. The environmental issues include 93.3 acres of landslide prone areas and 57.1 acres of steep slope areas with obvious overlaps in between. And here's the walk shed with the urban industrial as the brown. And that's where the Sheridan Station is located. The walk shed again with the location of the proposed zoning map changes. And going into detail, Site One is this festive candy cane looking area, Chartiers Avenue, Sudedell Street, Tindall and Allendale. It is currently hillside with houses there, but we recommend turning it to local neighborhood commercial, which is just an extension of the existing local neighborhood commercial in the area. Just down the road is a corner, a parking lot, I believe, and it's currently zoned hillside. And we'd like to make it local neighborhood commercial. The next, so this is the exact location of that second site, the parking lot. If we were to make it local neighborhood commercial and max it out, it would be, you know, a small apartment building on the corner there potentially. This second site is the Jasmine Nyree Campus located around by Thornton Street, Sherwood Avenue, Sherwood, sorry, and Landis Street. It is currently detached, single-unit residential as well as a portion to the bottom left is a little bit is park. And we want to make both residential mixed-use to better align Jasmine Nyree's activities with the zoning. Or rather the zoning with their current activities. It is because it's RMU, we have a height of 40 feet without performance points and 90 feet with with the height reduction zone adjacent to the park, the R1 district and R2 districts at 60 feet. The next two are just across from the street from each other. This is along Hillsborough and this first parcel, 42S17 houses the, I believe, a senior center. We would like to make it local neighborhood commercial and, or no, I'm sorry, take it from local neighborhood commercial, make it residential mixed-use. There is the issue of a split parcel, which we would want to make it from local neighborhood commercial to a single-unit detached residential high density, just so it matches the other half of its parcel. And across the street is parcel 42S71, which we would go from single-unit detached residential high density to local neighborhood commercial as part of our proposal. For that first portion, making it from RMU, it'll be 40 feet, max height 90 feet with performance points and 60 feet along the height reduction zones. The PRT Park and Ride itself, Sheridan Station, it is currently urban industrial. So these two parcels, 41D and, oh, I can't make that part out, but a portion of the other parcel make both of those residential mixed-use with a height of 40 feet, max height of 90 with performance points and 60 feet height adjacent to the R1D and other districts. And here's a rendering of what it could look like, again, large scale with so sorry, drawing a blank, with shops at the bottom potentially. Another perspective view with the same potential development in the foreground and also that parking lot in the corner behind that. And the precedent being the Hillsborough Plaza Retirement Community Center at 90 feet. Then we also have, oops, this planned unit development. Oops. One moment. Yes. Which is a rather large area, especially when we were trying to put up the notices. But we would want to make it a multi-unit residential high density, so RMH instead of the planned unit development that it currently is. So what we heard. Prior to the briefing last month, but during the development activities meeting that we had, there were some parcels bounded by Brutus, Landis and Thornton and Sherwood that should not be rezoned. That was my mistake. So we shifted it from those streets on one side of the Jasmine Nyree toward the park itself along Ashland. There has been a lot of support for the RCO and that the residents within the area during the development activities meeting stated, you know, if we, if they want to trust us, the Department of City Planning and the city itself, that we should support the RCO as much as possible. They're trying to do good in the area and that's what we intend to do. There's a suggestion to preserve existing housing stock prior to developing new housing. There's concern about the amount of existing affordable housing in the neighborhood in the sense that, you know, if you tell people that potential development can, sorry, can occur, then maybe that existing affordable housing may no longer be existing affordable housing. But also I think parking and safety concerns from new developments, saying that there's just not enough amenities in the area to support more people is what I had heard. So they do want additional amenities before any new developments of residential units. There's also suggestions for additional rezonings along the urban industrial area along Sheridan as opposed to what we just, the small portion that we had suggested. Okay, thank you, Andrew.
All right, so in conclusion, thank you all for staying with us all this time. We do think that it's really important that we, that we propose these three stations as the initial round of work that is really following work that has been done by others in many cases, such as PRT, you know, or has has looked to, you know, in addition to implementing the housing needs assessment. You know, we know that this is not the, you know, the planning commission's recommendation is not the end of community engagement. We have, like I said, you know, discussed with council members, with the registered community organizations, a, you know, a desire to continue to engage with communities because there will be a city council hearing. You know, obviously before city council makes the ultimate decision here. As I said, this is all a part of the TOD report. So there are a number of stations that do remain, you know, that do remain. There are additional 20 stations that are in the report that will be discussed directly for potential changes down the road, but are not a part of this proposal. And there are some that really larger planning needs to take place. We talked about some of those discussions around urban industrial areas in Sheridan or in Lawrenceville where people were looking, you know, maybe we could do some additional rezonings. Really thinking about the future of those areas probably takes a larger planning process, such as the comprehensive plan. And so we do anticipate that there will be some stations along the busway system or the T that we'll really be thinking of within that process over the next couple of years. So those are things that the planning commission, you know, that we do intend to bring to the planning commission in the future, but really focusing on these three initial stations. And so with that, I thank you all and, you know, we'll wait for any questions or comments after public testimony.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. So one thing I'd like to do, I noticed during some of the, thank you, Mr. Dash and Mr. Portugal for the presentation. Let's leave this what comes up later for just a moment. For some of you, I had noticed that you were taking photos during the tail end of this. I want to make sure that you can see. So you may want to go onto the website so that you can flip through a little bit so you're not so distant from what you're seeing here. And that, let me put on my glasses so I can help you out. You'll want to go to planningcommission@pittsburghpa.gov, do that while you're here. So I'm sure there are questions online, there are questions in the room. Want to make sure that you get to see that in case you do have questions. Clean that part up. We will open the floor for public testimony. I'm going to kick it over to Vice Chair O'Neil real quick. She'll give us a kind of what comes next for us up here.
Great. Thank you all for being here. Just to put a finer point on the procedure for this map amendment, and then this will be the same procedure for the following text amendment. Just so we're all aware, after public testimony and then comments from the commission, there will be a vote by planning commission. Planning commission is voting to make a recommendation to city council. We are not voting on the legislation today, we are making a recommendation only. Just per city code, city council then has 120 days to schedule a hearing. So there will be another opportunity for public testimony on both this map amendment and the following text amendment. And then city council would then be required to act within 90 days of that hearing. So they will have also their regular and standing committee meetings that you would have the opportunity to speak with regards to the both of these items. So again, you will have today to speak a city council hearing and then multiple city council meetings where you have that opportunity. So in terms of our orderly testimony today, this is a legislative hearing on both the map amendment and the text amendment. So we do have a court reporter who is here remotely. Because of all the number of people in the room, we appreciate you being here and the large number online. I know you all can't see, but there are 67 right now. We would like everybody to speak clearly. When you come up, you will have three minutes to testify. Please state your name. Please state your name, spell your name, your address, and if you are authorized to be speaking on behalf of any organization. I will be timing you, you may hear a little beep, I will ask you to wrap up after your three minutes. Please note that we're only taking testimony on the respective applications, so if you're here for the MAP amendment, please speak to that. If you're waiting to speak to the text amendment, please wait until that item is up later. And I'm sorry, when I say text amendment, that is the
Final hearing in action for today.
The final hearing in action is the last item related to inclusionary zoning, parking and those other items. And so we will be speaking to the relevant testimony. You know, just keeping in mind that there are a lot of us here, we do receive your writings, we receive any sort of things that have been submitted previously. If you say that somebody before you has already spoken to the point that you are going to make, please feel free to make that, that does not undermine your testimony, but it does help everybody here get a chance to speak today. Not trying to cut you short, but if Commissioner Mazza were to say the same thing I were going to, and of course he would, I would say, I'm seconding your case. So, and like I said, we do have the court reporter today, so because she is remote, only one person speaking at a time, that's kind of commission, everybody at the time, please don't be speaking in the audience, it's hard for people who are at home to hear you, we want them to hear you. And it's hard for everybody involved to make sure that the record is accurate. We want to say everything, hear everything that you're saying, be reflected in the written record for this, which is sent to city council and kept as part of the whole application. So in terms of logistics for testimony today.
Come to the mic.
Please come to the mic, we're going to take, and don't, don't stampede. We are going to take testimony in person first today, is that right?
Yes, and if people want to line up in the center between the two aisles, and then you will have one at a time come to the podium, you know, I mean, obviously, if there are people in line and you wish to sit in your seat and wait to testify, you're more than welcome to do that as well.
Yes.
And because everyone who wishes to testify will be given the opportunity to testify.
Yes. Oh, and final, final comment on that, this is going to be a long hearing today, we will take some periodic recesses, so everybody has a break to go to the bathroom, get a drink, you know, stop staring at a screen for a few minutes. So thank you all for coming and we will take the first step, go right ahead.
Hello, planning commission, planning department, hello, everyone who came out, there are a lot of people in here, for lots of different reasons, because there are a lot of different policies that are being proposed.
Who are you?
Oh.
Yeah, sorry, could you please?
We're getting to that part, it's very important.
Yeah.
So my name is Daniel Blonsky, I'm the digital organizing director with Pittsburghers for Public Transit. Pittsburghers for Public Transit is a grassroots union of transit riders and transit workers. We organize for more accessible, affordable, public transportation and housing near great transit. I'm here just to briefly say that whether you live in the West End or the East End, whether you live in Uptown or Downtown, everyone deserves access to public transit, everyone deserves access to housing. When you look at, I invite commissioners, everyone in the audience, when you think back to any great city you've been in recently, any place you've been and you remember, you feel, wow, this, this is a, there's so many things to do here, there is a great social fabric here, you know, there's people, they're smiling, you know, they seem to be connected. It's all because of, of public investment in public transit, public sidewalks, public infrastructure that supports housing and businesses. These are places that we as a society have decided to put our public resources. It is not, because we've decided to put our public resources, it is, it is important that those who invest in these public spaces and will profit on these public spaces are also giving the community a higher, a higher, you know, return on the public investment in these places. So Pittsburghers for Public Transit, our members have for years been organizing for equitable transit oriented development policies. In 2016, we worked with transit riders who were displaced from East Liberty because of rising housing prices, because of evictions, and we just heard, what was your experience being farther outside the city of Pittsburgh, being without access to transit? You know, by and large, everyone was saying that it is harder to get to work, it is harder to get to childcare, it is harder to get the groceries, the things that we need. It is an issue, transit and housing, that we care a lot about. In 2021, we issued the 100-day transit platform. That called on Mayor Gani to pass equitable transit oriented development policies that put affordable housing near public transit. In 2024, this year, our members voted to say, yes, we want to continue organizing for equitable public transit priorities. So what the planning department just presented to us, it's clearly that they are putting a lot of work into this, these proposals, but we, and we support them in that work. We want to, we want to remind them that we can go further, we can't stop here.
Three minutes, please wrap up.
Okay, so we, we support the work, but we can't stop here. We can't have transit oriented development without equity because that ends in transit rider displacement, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Thank you, Mr. Blonsky. Next up, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Kim Salinatro, I am Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith, Chief of Staff. Councilwoman, because of budget hearings, is not able to be with us today, but she did ask me to speak on her behalf. One of the things that she felt very strongly was today that we should ask for a continuance until we have more time to discuss this with our communities. There has been such a massive zoning changes occurring simultaneously, we would like a pause on that until we can thoroughly vet that through our community groups. There are several community groups that did not get to hear this legislation and these proposals. In our neighborhood, we have initiated work with three different stabilization programs to preserve housing and homeownership. We are working currently with another developer to put in housing for seniors, veterans, homeless and, not homeless, I'm sorry, homeowners that want to downsize. One of the things that councilwoman wants to be able to say, that we had a affordable housing study that was done a few years back before this new one was done, we've been working on that for several years. And that study concluded that in our area, we have an overabundance of affordable housing and we need some market rate housing, we need quality affordable housing as well. One of the things that councilwoman and I would like to make a statement on is that I saw in this presentation, the term housing justice. Now, that means something different to, to everybody, you know, there have been many definitions of that. But for people who live in a neighborhood and bought there because there are single family homes, that doesn't sound like justice at all. People have spent 30, 40 years in their homes and they don't want to live in a place where there are, you know, multi-unit facilities, they could do that if they wanted to, they could move to other neighborhoods and do that. You know, they stayed, they invested in these neighborhoods like Sheridan, Mount Washington, because they would like to have the quality of life preserved for them. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salinatro.
Marcianna Rossi, 916 Hillsborough Street, five generation lifetime resident of Sheridan. I've watched the entire city move forward and be developed and taken care of carefully while we continually, from the time I was five years old, get hit one time after another. They have successfully, go ahead, they've successfully and purposefully ruined our neighborhood, destroyed it by taking everything that they didn't want in other areas and putting it into our, our neighborhood. Exactly. We are a, a multi-generational, we are a multicultural, we are, we have come from all colors, all, all whatever, and we get along fine, but we are a residential neighborhood. We need assistance, Kim was talking about it, Teresa knows it, we are a neighborhood, we were used to going to this store. Instead, everything's being torn down and now you're going to put, you've got to be kidding me, you think you're going to put a multi-unit right in the bottom of my street? Where we used to have stores, you're going to, you're going to destroy us even further. I call this putting the nails in our coffin. I, on my, my own, at 70 years of age, purchased properties beside me that were going vacant, up the street, all, all in Sheridan, and on my hands and knees with a couple neighborhood guys and, and certainly a professional plumber and electrician, I re-renovated those homes, those abandoned homes and put great people in there and we're happy and they want to live there. My tenants, they're my tenants, they want to buy. Why can't we help them buy all of those damn abandoned homes over on the other side of Sheridan and invest in that instead of putting up these high rises? That is not us, that's not us. And I know all of our neighbors, I know the black neighbors, I know the black churches, I know the, the Asians, I know, I mean, I walk, I walk the streets every day saying hi to everybody. That's us. We have more than enough. And what they did with that senior high rise, that's a fiasco. My grandmother lived in there at the end of her life and what did they do to her? They put in the, the, they changed it that drug addicts could be family and put it, and then, oh my God, we had to get her out of there, it was disgusting. I had a, right beside me, I had a drug rehab facility because that was family too. 12 years I had my life threatened by prostitutes, pimps, drug dealers, drug addicts, you know, and I finally got them out of there, but it was a battle, all right? Now there's a neighborhood, neighbor in there, God help us that they didn't because they're, that they don't have to go back to Mexico, but I've got good neighbors.
Three minutes, please wrap up.
Okay. We want, we want help in our neighborhood to, we have a family oriented neighborhood of all colors, all races, all religions, that's what we want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for testimony.
Hi, my name is Terri Hannes, 2864 Sanborn Street, Sheridan, or sometimes they call Crafton Heights. So I agree with the past gentleman, Mr. Blonsky of his name, everybody has the right to transit and a place to live and everything, but the particulars of Sheridan are a whole different, different animal together. I talked to people in the hall that were upset about Polish Hill and the transit and everything and I, there are valid concerns, but I haven't slept in two months since Teresa Kell Smith sent out a letter about the zoning. I'm afraid, my husband's afraid I'm going to have a heart attack, I don't sleep, I have nightmares of people breaking into our house with knives. Now, every night we go to bed in all of our surrounding areas, and I think Steve Mazza, you're from Sheridan, your brother, I believe, still lives there, we hear gunshots all night long, gunshots, drag racing, it's, our cars are getting broken into every week, it's horrible, it's horrible. I was passing out flyers for Teresa Kell Smith at the new Giant Eagle in Nobelstown Road, and I would say, do you live in this city? And if they said, no, Green Tree, Crafton, I'd keep going. So I approached a gentleman who was with his little girl coming out and I said, do you live in Sheridan, do you live in this city? And he said, yes, why? And I said, well, have you heard about the zoning? And he rolled his eyes and he said, I'm a Zone 6 police officer. And I said, are you in favor of it? And he said, oh no, we have not enough police for the turf wars that are going on on Ashland, Ashland, Landis and Bergman, where you're proposing a lot of this, there's not enough police, we hear shootings all night. He said, it will be a travesty because we can't control the crime over there, it's so bad. I grew up in Sheridan and I would invite all of you, please, please go to Merwin Avenue. 2927 was a beautiful home that we had to let go for $20,000 20 years ago, when it should have gone for 80 or 90 at the time, that was a, a good amount. There are people trapped over there tighter that they're more in a prison than P. Diddy over in Sheridan, because nobody wants to buy your house over there, it's hell, it's hell, and you're going to add to that? Why would you do that to us? I mean, I want to change my name to collateral damage, I mean, this has to be better thought out. Sure, everybody needs to have a place to live, but put more quality people in there, more quality, I mean, seriously, there are 80, 90-year-old people living in these neighborhoods, there's people with little kids, and you're going to put who knows who in these neighborhoods? Without police? There was a store for years, and Steve Mazza, you know this, it was, it was Foodland, it was owned by a man named Bill Crowbot, his son Joe actually took it over when he died. They couldn't stand business because the thievery was so bad that he kept trying, kept trying, till finally a truck drove through his front window, am I right, anybody who knows this?
That's three minutes, please wrap up.
Robbed him through the front window and, and, and he said, this is enough. So Family Dollar just vacated because they couldn't control the crime in there, there were again robbed blind. We have no police in that area and you can't do that to us, so please buy my house, please make it part of your plan. I want out of there, please.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony. We appreciate you. We appreciate you. Thank you so much for your testimony.
One moment, please. Okay, I, Mary Kronz Kozykovich, my family have been residents of the West End area for five generations. I've, the third generation, my daughter is the fourth, to live in the home that I live in on 1263 Berry Street, 15204. As far as our area goes, we are fully inundated, we have got hundreds of units of lower income, we have hundreds of units of affordable housing, we have thousands of people that have joined our neighborhood that are neither actually part of our neighborhood, want to be part of our neighborhood, or act like they belong in any neighborhood. I live on the Crafton Heights side of Sheridan, my mother lived on more the Sheridan side. After Ben Wood put up his housing developments over there, they ruined her home, they ruined her life, they drove them into their graves, my parents. They destroyed their lives, they destroyed that community. And now you want to come over and go to a community who's already impacted by the destruction across the bridge and you want to bring that to ours? There's no excuse for it, there's no way you should do it, it's ungodly. We deserve better than this. We've maintained our neighborhoods through horrendous problems, we, we kept it through COVID, we kept it through the depressions and we've maintained it, it's hard, but we've done it, we brought our families up. We are a God-fearing, residential, multiracial community and we'd like to keep it that way. The, the police can't keep up with it. One example, my husband was working on our yard and he was using a nail gun that uses some small pellet of accelerant, I don't know why that's doing that, but it's a, it has a small accelerant pellet, boom, boom, boom. We had five policemen come up our, up our hillside because they thought we were shooting somebody. You cannot even use tools in our neighborhood with somebody thinking someone else is getting shot. And if that's not the perfect example of how our neighborhood's been ruined, I don't know what is. Please, dear God, stop this now, we're totally against it, every single resident, we don't want it and our voice needs to be heard.
One moment, please. Might you mind spelling your last name because we have a court reporter, please and thank you.
Be prepared, it's K-O-Z as in zebra, A-K-I-E-W-I-C-Z, maiden name Kronz, K-R-O-N-Z.
Excellent, thank you. All right.
Hi, can everybody hear me? Yeah, I'm nervous. I've never done this.
You'll be all right.
Good afternoon, my name is Suzanne Pace, the last name is spelled P-A-C-E. My address is 3407 Beth Oven Street, Pittsburgh, 15219. I'm a proud resident of Polish Hill. I'm a strong believer in affordable housing and housing equity for all. Affordable housing is part of our family values and that is why my husband, Tim, my daughter, Sophia, who's at her high school right now, but on the Zoom call, hi, Sof, and myself are here to address these issues. I would like to comment specifically on the proposed Heron TOD zoning legislation. The commission is being asked to vote on a map of Heron Avenue The commission is being asked to vote on a map of Heron Avenue TOD with parcels marked for changes. It is, I believe, called a map amendment. I wish to ask that an umbrella continuance be considered as there are clearly several issues related to the newly proposed rezoning, the rezoning amendments, as well as the greater planning and development for this specific TOD site. I wish to also specifically recommend that council remove the Beth Oven Street parcels from the map amendment so they can stay zoned as they are now. The current Beth Oven Street parcels slated for development in the proposed plan are simply unsuitable for development due to the, due to their naturally steep sloping, an unfathomable amount of water daylighted from old underground springs, tiny, single-lane streets, impenetrable surfaces from Bigelow and the ancient utility infrastructure beneath our street, all of which makes the areas of Beth Oven the same areas currently slated for development, a virtual labyrinth of sinkholes, untenable ice flows in the winter, routine parking challenges, major traffic safety issues, and the forever unsuccessful construction and rebuilding of underground systems from PWSA and other institutions. I have been a resident of Polish Hill on Beth Oven Street for over 20 years and prior to that, uh, prior to being a proud Polish Hill resident, lived in Lawrenceville before getting priced out of that neighborhood. What's there now, you might know, is something called the Foundry, a behemoth apartment complex where a 580 square foot studio will run you about $1,500 and where a one bedroom costs over $2,000. We moved to Polish Hill to be in affordable housing. Apparently there are plenty of units available at that apartment building in Lawrenceville. In conclusion, I would like to say that the amendment would open the door to development scale way beyond what is currently desirable and more importantly, sustainable for our dear existing community. Thank you.
Suzanne, Suzanne. You did a good job. There was no need for fear. You're welcome.
Hello, my name is Lorraine Callen, L O R R A I N E. Last name is Callen, C A L L E N. I've lived in Polish Hill for 16 years. I own three properties that are being, that are being proposed for rezoning. These lots are located between Beth Oven, Bigelow and Harding Street. I strongly oppose the rezoning that is proposed for Polish Hill as written in the TOD. The lots between Beth Oven and Bigelow are not suitable for these proposed specifications, specifically in regard to the height increase to 60 feet. Most of these lots are on a very steep hill coming down from Bigelow. It is my understanding that the current zoning, which allows for the buildings to be 40 feet high, is to protect construction on these steep slopes, thus preventing landslide. Allowing these larger, high-density, 60-feet-tall buildings will put our neighborhood at an unnecessary risk. Were these partials between Beth Oven and Bigelow chosen by somebody looking at a flat map? If you think that Heron Station is a good option for public transit for residents in these new developments, you have obviously never walked from Heron Station to Harding Street before. 100% uphill walk involving multiple sets, or multiple sets of city stairs. With elimination of the 54 and 77 bus lines, there will be no options for these folks. This should not be tied to the Heron Station Walk shed. These lots are also constantly flooded. Water pours into the street both on Beth Oven and Harding and PWA says it's not their water. Once construction begins, the water will only be diverted to the current houses. Add flooding and sinkholes on top of the landslides. The infrastructure in our neighborhood is dismal. The water lines on Beth Oven and Harding have been worked on countless times in the past couple of years. Water main breaks, gas leaks, power outages are common. Increasing the population in the area will put even more of a strain on our system. And until the city can fix the existing problems, I propose we don't create more. Beth Oven Street is very narrow, oh, sorry. Harding Street is a small dead-end street that currently has three single-family homes. This street is so small that backing up downhill into an intersection is the only way I can leave my house. Adding more high-density houses here will completely shut down my street. Beth Oven Street is a very narrow street which, which two vehicles cannot pass at the same time. These roads cannot accommodate the building size change and the increase in population. I'm a mother of two small children. They ride their bikes in our narrow streets and they play on the block. Our community has worked hard for a decade to achieve public calming for the safety of families who live here. Drastically increasing the population in our tiny neighborhood sets all that back. This is a family-focused community. Enough cars cut through here. As, in, in response to the having a staggered size allowed to adjacent properties, that doesn't go for people that are surrounded by these properties because my property is in it. That means I could have 60 feet walls on my native garden I just put in this year. Like, and I could have it on three sides of my house. I would like to really ask you to consider rezoning and the impact it's putting on us. As far as we're addressing the rezoning of Heron Avenue and Ruth Oven Way, please keep the current zoning specifications to 40 feet. Again, this protects against unsafe construction on these steep hills. People live on those houses on those hills. We just had a landslide in our neighborhood. Please consider this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Father Thomas Grams. That's spelled G R A M C. I live at 22537th Street in Lawrenceville. I'm the pastor at St. Augustine Church, which is located at 23437th Street. And I want to speak about the rezoning proposed for St. Augustine Plaza, as well as the church and the friary properties. I believe that it should not be included at this time, nor ever, for two reasons. One, it does not actually fall within the scope by your own admission and, and the map that was proposed with the Heron Transit scope. It says outside of that area. You cannot walk to the station from here within reason. And secondly, I don't think that it is appropriate to rezone this in, from, um, single unit attached residential high-density to local neighborhood commercial because St. Augustine Plaza is in fact a senior high-rise that is currently high, does, high-density residential. So I don't know how that gets zoned into commercial. Additionally, on the church property adjacent to it is a, what we would understand as a monastery, it's a friary. There are 34 monks that currently live there and full-time and that is their primary residence. And it is, again, a residence. It's not a commercial property building. And so I think for those reasons, as well as the fact that it does not actually fall within the transit nature of this rezoning, it should have never been put here. At the very least, I would propose, as many other have, for a continuum so that the, at least the residents living in St. Augustine Plaza understand what's happening to their building. Because at current time, there was only one flyer put up on 36th Street and many of those people do not pass that side of the street. It was not between the resident and their parking lot and no notice was given to those residents to even be aware of this meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you, Father Thomas.
Good afternoon. My name is Hannah Woodruff, W O O D R O O F E. I live at 1136 Heron Avenue in Polish Hill on a property that this proposal seeks to rezonate, surrounded by properties that will be rezoned if this goes through. I ride the bus every day and support housing near our city's public transit. I do not, however, support the rezoning approach taken here and I'd like to outline why. It would make Polish Hill less livable, less safe and less affordable if passed. First, the proposed building height increase from 40 to 90 feet is massive and not at all aligned with the neighborhood. Buildings of this size are at odds with the character and capacity of Polish Hill where the vast majority of buildings are two-to-four-story residences on very narrow streets. Allowing 90-foot apartment complexes would fundamentally alter the face of our neighborhood, obscuring the entire hillside. The proposed heights don't align with PRT's own TOD guidelines, which emphasize that, quote, "Height should be balanced with the existing context so as not to overwhelm the surrounding neighborhood," and further specify that development in neighborhoods like Polish Hill should be limited to three-to-five stories with 30% to 70% lot coverage. Numbers that line up current zoning at these sites. I want to say one thing too about performance points, just to say, in this case, performance points would be automatic essentially to 85 feet at these sites because they are within a half mile of the, the transit station and because of our inclusionary zoning ordinance in the neighborhood. So the idea that, that we would not immediately shoot up without any public benefit to 85 feet should be taken into account. Uh, second, changing parcels from hillside, one of the most protected zoning categories with conditions on ground disturbance and plan review, to residential mixed use puts the hillside and the people living along the hillside at risk. Our property and every one of the surrounding properties up for rezoning includes steep slopes around 30% grade that are prone to ground shifts, erosion and landslides. The recent landslide on Brereton shows how real this risk is. I ask the commission to consider what has changed about this hillside to make it no longer in need of the protections of hillside zoning. Finally, the proposed rezoning would make Polish Hill less affordable. A handful of IZ units are not enough to offset
That's three minutes, please wrap up.
The rise in median rent and the displacement of households. I refer you to the Housing Needs Assessment, which states that 90% of new construction today is luxury rentals with an average rent of $1,800 a month. This is not the housing that Polish Hill needs. I, I beg of you to consider, as you think about this amendment, that you leave current zoning as it is in Polish Hill.
Thank you. Happy morning.
Hi, my name is Ricky Colling, K O L L I N G. I'm going to just read from something I wrote, my words here. I just want to say that I appreciate the intention of the, the planning commission has, has to supporting more homes near public transit. As Hannah mentioned, we ride the bus frequently and we feel that the public transit is vital to Pittsburgh. Um, I own a home on Heron Avenue, uh, near Ruthven and my property has two, two lots that are scheduled to be upzoned in this particular proposal. And as Hannah mentioned, that there, there, much of those lots are 30% grade, steep slope, zoned hillside. And in Pittsburgh zoning code's own words, they say that hillside zoning should, one, promote environmental preservation, two, allow reasonable and reasonable use and development of property, and three, applied in areas that are not suitable for intensive development. Hillside zoning protects my property, my neighbor's property and my neighborhood. It encourages safer construction practices and avoids steep slopes that have potential for landslides, which we've already had one this year. Hillside zoning also allows us to have a dialogue with developers. So if someone needs to apply for a variance of sorts or they want to increase their height, we can actually talk to them about what we might want them to do in order to give them that, that variance. And again, I want to just reiterate the performance point system that in both of these, both of these proposed upzonings, the performance points are nearly automatically awarded, giving the max height of 60 feet up on Beth Oven and for us, a max height of 85 feet. Now, what is going to stop developers for, from pushing for that particular development? Why, what would it be the incentive for someone to keep it lower? The, I believe that, that what this will do will also lessen the site review time if, if upzoned. I think this opens doors to developers and encourages them to push for maximum profit with minimal accountability around safe construction practices on steep and vulnerable hillsides. The slide deck is misleading. The, the size of these buildings, I want to say the photos and those, and then the slide decks are from the front of those buildings. If you went to the back of the buildings, you'd see they're much larger buildings. The slide deck that shows the perspective from Heron Avenue shows a medium-density proposal and isn't taking into account that, that developers aren't going to build a medium-density, uh, development if they have the opportunity to, to have more profit. Oh yeah, I just saw, I want to say maybe one more thing here and, and the, the current zoning already is met, meets the, already meets the TOD's guidelines for, for 50% max lot coverage and 40, 40-foot max height. I'm sorry, I'm really struggling here. So I'm just going to say that I, I, oh, and also the high-density developments in Polish Hill will amplify the current parking.
Please wrap up.
Okay. We don't want to amplify the current parking deficit on Beth Oven and Heron and we don't want to increase the frequent and often dangerous traffic in the neighborhood. Thank you so much. I, I ask that you consider amending this.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hello, my name is Leslie Clegg, L E S L I E C L A G U E. Address is 3411 Flavian, F L A V I A N Street. That's in Polish Hill. My house overlooks the, the Heron site and, um, as a almost 20-year resident of the neighborhood, I've been involved with the neighborhood group and I'm staff on the neighborhood, uh, community group for a long time and got really familiar with the road and issues, uh, infrastructure issues and so much, you've heard so much about. And I want to amplify and provide more detail on these points that people have already provided. Traffic, we're a captive community. There's only a few ways in and out and our streets are teeny tiny. So when, when development is added on our borders, as is happening at Melwood Avenue in Oakland, has a 10-story building going up, a 12-story building is following it, more to follow, that's piling up on one entrance. And we have these tiny little streets. We're already a cut-through neighborhood. We already have issues, serious issues on Heron Avenue, school buses, traffic. We already can't handle the traffic of getting infrastructure issues as other people have commented. We have outages constantly, weekly. There's, there's something all the time. The water goes out, Duquesne lights down there, transformer blows. This is just normal. We have candles, I have everything ready. It happens so often. These issues should be solved before we are upzoned. Geological issues, the groundwater people are talking about, this has been an issue for decades. I mean, back to the teens. Water coming out of the hillsides, PWA can provide ample documentation. They have tested this. This is not city water. There are multiple streams east to west. Locations include Melwood Avenue under the Bloomfield Bridge. Water is coming out of that hillside. Bethoven Street, people have mentioned, water is coming out of that hillside. Heron Avenue, Beth, uh, Brereton Street, we just lost a section of street there. Feeling Way, another place. These are all, this is natural water streams, the entire length of the neighborhood. In addition to these unstable hillsides, and again, decades ago, our hillsides were mined. So that is an issue there too. And of course, we are landslide-prone and steep hillside. And I should also note, um, over the decades, our neighborhood has lost entire streets because the hillsides have fallen. If you look at Polish Hill, these deep ravines, there used to be houses and streets. And we, again, in the fall, we just lost a section of a street. The reason Gold Way is now the entrance to Polish Hill is because Melwood Avenue, there was a landslide there in the eighties. That's why that teeny little alley called Gold Way is now the only entrance to Polish Hill from Oakland. This goes back, you know, you look at old, old maps from early 20th century, Wayne Street, now gone, that was off Heron Avenue. So I, I strongly ask that before any upzoning and burdening, this geological, steep hillside with a very specific traffic scale that can't really be changed, please look at the geological situation, look at the mines, look at the water because you, you can hear this from everyone. This is verifiable. We have photos.
That's time, please wrap up.
Okay. And just, uh, and Bigelow, completely inappropriate. I don't know why this is here. That's a highway. Is not safe to walk along there. The other one, they shouldn't be that tall. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Mouth's a little dry. It's like a sauna down here. Excuse me. Santa Claus, the North Pole, Ish Hill. I, I've prepared something to read to y'all. Ladies and gentlemen of the zoning board, thank you for granting an old man, letting me a chance to speak. thank you for granting an old man like me a chance to speak. I hope you remember me. I might be able, or, excuse me, I might be able to see how good you've been these many years, but I'm no mind reader. I'm just good at keeping records, and I like to put it on the record today how wonderful it is to see all you again and how proud I am of you. I always wish to come here before you today, not as your favorite bringer of Christmas cheer, but as a representative of the spirit of this great city, which I have grown to love so much over her last couple hundred years. Pittsburgh, a place where the spirit of human goodness can still be felt, where young people can find the promise to find love and where families can find the time to build loving homes, make new traditions, choose to represent the warming and endearing values which we hold so close. This place is special because of what it already is and not because of what it could become if we force it to change. The proposal before you, I'm sure, as polished and as pretty as a new Radio Flyer, actually threatens to undo this very magic that makes this cute city of neighborhoods the greatest city on planet Earth. Plenty of times, I've been approached to build an amusement park or a skyscraper or condominium complex on the North Pole. Sure, it might house more elves and luxurious fashions, but what would it cost? Actually, $1,800 bucks a month, I guess, as I just learned that. But here in Pittsburgh, the warmth, the charm, the joy that draws people to this community would be overshadowed, quite literally, by 90-foot developments that prioritize growth over quality of life. So many of the letters I've gotten from all the little boys and girls of Pittsburgh already cite how little sunshine their houses get throughout the year, what the overcast skies. Imagine how many homes will be in darkness, shadowed by massive structures, if this measure were to come to pass. Sunshine is as important to people as milk is to cookies. Quality of life suffers immensely in states of depression. Even sometimes after Christmas, when it's a whole year away and there's nothing left to do for me to wait, even I suffer from low elf esteem. Pretty soon, with enough gloomy people in one place, it makes it hard to plan any kind of future. And that's when I start getting the letters from people who ask for me for a truly sad miracle indeed. That's when little boys and girls ask me to take them somewhere else, take them someplace happy. Sadness and loneliness are very contagious, much like warmth and gentleness and togetherness, they are too. But once enough sadness is somewhere, it can last generations. I ask you to remember that progress isn't always about building bigger or cramming more into space we have. Why such an old place as this might not even be able to handle it anyhow. Making new problems instead of solving old ones has led to a few funny memories I'm sure you all have yourselves. I know no one has forgotten the little city bus taking a snooze in a sinkhole down the street from here. Sometimes progress is about protecting what works, preserving what we built together, and saying no to changes that would disrupt the delicate balance of our adorable communities. Think about the residents, your neighbors. They worked tirelessly to create a neighborhood that fosters connection, pride, and peace for the children. Much like their smiles, these qualities cannot be measured in square footage. And if we sacrifice them now, they may be lost forever.
Santa, please wrap up.
So I urge you, in the spirit of the season and the spirit of the stewardship of families that have risked so much to build this great city, let us not be Mr. Potters and sell our little town off to men with shiny, expensive solutions to problems some hard work and local cheer could solve on its own. Don't leave your neighborhood grandmothers in your North Polish Hill or your Hollidayselwood or their gift district with no bus route. Please oppose this motion. Let's keep this magic alive, and let's keep all of you on the nice list this year. I've spent so much time hauling coal out of this town, it'd be a true shame to start bringing it back. Thank you very much.
One moment, Santa. Might we have the gifts of your first and last name, please?
Santa Claus.
Right.
Thank you.
Can I have your full name, though, please? And thank you for the record, so that we... The one that you were given at birth, please. Okay.
Hello, thank you for hearing us all today. My name is Dana Domi. I live on 3425 Bethaven Street, right across from the proposed development. And like many of my neighbors up and down the street, I have been fighting with PWSA for years and now Domi as well due to the massive water and sewer infrastructures failures that continually happen in front of my home. I have been working with Councilwoman Deb Gross for months on end, who is fully aware of all of this, and have been demanding a full investigation by Domi of Bethaven and the hillside, which you are actually proposing for development or for rezoning. I've had to fight to protect myself and my neighbor's health and safety, our homes, our property values, so we don't have to literally pay for their failure to maintain our utility lines. This is not hyperbole, so please excuse me if I get a little hot here. This has happened to me and my 90-year-old neighbor over the last six months. They tried to make us fix their sewer problems from their water main break and their sinkholes, which is why I'm asking to fix our street, not to develop, not to rezone. The day PWSA was finally fixing the sinkhole from three and a half years of nonstop sinkholes, the day was the day that Brereton collapsed onto the busway. About two hours after I said to the inspector, "If you don't stop piecemealing this, you're going to have catastrophic failure on your hands to millions of dollars, not tens of thousands like you tried to stick us with, which was $67,000 that my neighbor and I were supposed to take care of, that I had to take a $35,000 loan now that I'm still waiting for my $8,000 deposit to get back, which I haven't been able to pay my city taxes yet, which I almost had to quit my job, which I had to take my 90-year-old neighbor to the doctors because she was having a heart attack because she received a letter in the mail that said, 'Failure notice, you have seven days to come up with a plan on how you're going to fix this.'" After 15-plus water main breaks up and down our street for three years, after three and a half years of a sinkhole that was never fully addressed and patched again and again and again, I have been devastated, and my neighbors know it, and we know everybody in this room. We all know each other in this room. We actually say to each other, "Hi, neighbor! How you doing, neighbor? How can I help you, neighbor?" Because we help each other. They know I'm a cancer survivor. I wouldn't have survived cancer if it wasn't for my neighbors in this room. We have multiple cancer survivors on our street. We have multiple people fighting just for their basic health, just to pay their rent, just to pay their mortgage. And instead, I've had to take eight days off of work in the last six months. I have had to spend thousands of dollars that I did not have. I've had multiple corrupt plumbers come out to my house only to figure out all by myself that my sewer lateral detached from their sinking water or from their sinking sewer line. I am not a plumber. I saw one scope and I could figure that out. One scope. I had structural engineers, I had lawyers set up. But I went to PWSA and I spoke to the board. And oddly enough, city planning was not there that day. Dr. Bay was not there that day. Dr. Bay did not get to hear about the hell that we had been through. Mr. McFadden knows very well.
That's time, please wrap up.
I am calling for a full investigation of our hillside from Domi. I expect it to be done. Deb Gross has also put in the request for a full investigation. I have her email if anybody would like to see it. I have documentation, I have pictures out the wazoo. I'm here to support all of my neighbors. Please help us.
Thank you. Your testimony.
Hi, my name's Erin Nolan. I live at 1154 Heron Avenue. And you can hear all the structural stuff, so I'm just going to speak from the heart. My dad's name is Robert Mazza. That man was a structural zone that you want to do on Heron Avenue. Yeah, that big house that stands all by itself. My father, he's 75 years old. His name is Robert Mazza. Mr. Mazza, nice to meet you, sir. His name is Robert Mazza. Sure, there's no relation, I'm just saying. He was brought home to that house 75 years ago. I was brought home to it 45 years ago. We have lived in it, my sister lives in it, her children live in it, his grandbabies live in it. When you look out our window, we don't see nothing because there's nothing there because it was protected by people that came before you and by people that are hoping that you uphold the same laws that they did. I appreciate you that you at least pay attention because clearly, we have some people that don't. I would like to know if any of these people have ever walked along Bigelow Boulevard. The Boulevard says it's a highway. Boulevard, that's its word. It means no residential walking. By nature, our niche is we are a neighborhood. By design, that's what you're taking from us. When you put funny, everybody knows East Liberty and Shady Side, and nobody wants them except for our greedy tornado neighborhood swallowers. And that's what they're doing. If you think for one second that Heron Avenue isn't going to look like 40th Street in Lawrenceville, let's be honest. And I don't need you to be honest with me. I need you to be honest with Yens because Yens are the ones that take that bribe. And that's what it is. We have to forfeit our bus lines so that you can build big buildings. You're going to build big buildings and take away the 54D that comes through Polish Hill for a half a mile. Sir, have you ever walked that half a mile? I bet on my granddaughter's death, you have not. I bet 100%. I don't know if Yens have. I implore all of you to just take the walk from Heron Avenue Station to my friend on Harding Street. Just take a look at our house. That's all I'm asking. I'm asking you to take a look, go there and actually look at this place before you say, "Hey, there's this area on the map. Let's fill it up, let's swallow it whole, let's take every bit of it." You say that you give sewer lines, you say affordable housing. Go down to Lawrenceville, ask anybody if they have affordable housing. Better yet, try and get into one of those affordable housing and go through the hoops that people have to go through for your affordable housing. You don't live in affordable housing. None of you live in affordable housing. Congratulations. I live in affordable housing because I'm fucking poor. And I'm sorry that I have to say that, but I'm not the only one. So if you laugh about displacing the displacement and you act like it's no big deal to displace somebody, ask the Hill District when they built the Civic Arena. Ask them, ask them how they felt. I'm just imploring you to take a look. That's what I'm asking you. Please take a look. Our niche is our neighborhood. If you don't know Polish Hill, then you don't know it. If you know it, that's because two reasons.
Man, that's time, please wrap up.
Yep, two reasons. You've seen it on a show by Rick Seaback as the cut-through neighborhood, or you know it because you have a friend, a relative, or it may be your own neighborhood. Please, I ask you, don't relinquish all our neighborhoods.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hi, my name is Eric Gilkannish, E-R-I-C-G-I-L-L-K-A-N-I-S-H. Aaron is my neighbor, one of my neighbors. For 40 years, my family has owned 1134 Heron Avenue, which sits right on the middle of the Espin, precariously above Ruthven Street. It's designated as hillside for a reason. And although I don't live there any longer, I'll tell you a little bit about who does. My 73-year-old father, a cancer survivor, my sister, a single mother, and my nephew, a successful student at Pittsburgh State Tech, who takes the 54C to get there and yesterday took the 54C to the T, to Dormont, to play soccer. So you talk about building housing to have access to public transit as you remove the 54C and you build these homes that threaten my family home of 40 years. And I know that you say that removing hillside zoning would still allow for these considerations for landslide-prone and steep-slope homes. You may be willing to risk that. That may be a risk that you're willing to take, but it's not a risk that I feel comfortable for my father, who's owned that home for 40 years. So I support progress, and of course, we want to have affordable housing and we want to make Pittsburgh a beautiful city and we want to retain our folks. But I don't want to do it at the cost of my neighbors in Polish Hill. So before you pass this along, remove the rezoning opportunities.
Thank you for your testimony.
My name is Caleb Gamble. I live at 3510 Melwood Avenue in Polish Hill. I can't think of anything else to say. I just want to stand with my neighbors. Not one person I know in Polish Hill is for this. Not one. I've been there for 20 years, whatever that means. Give us an opportunity to have a say in what actually happens. This gives all our power away. Give us an opportunity. We know something's going to happen eventually. Give us the opportunity to be a part of that and make something that we want to make. That's it.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hello, my name is Jack Alto. I live on Denny Street, within the half-mile walkable-access zone. I support these changes. I think they're a net positive. I think constraining this to the map change has missed out on a lot of the discussion. Removing the parking minimums can remove cars. Cars, especially on Bigelow Boulevard, cause accidents, and the public data is catching up to that. The increasing the speed of a vehicle doesn't increase the damage done in a crash one-to-one. The damage done in the crash grows more and more the more that the speed increases. And further, the same is true for the vehicle size. A vehicle with a taller hood is going to have a much better shot at hitting my vital organs than a sedan. And those have become more and more popular in America. So I support this change, and I think everyone is better served by looking at the mode shift away from cars. And I also support geological surveys. I think PWSA has a lot of infrastructure that they really need to upkeep, and we're really hearing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Samantha Stowe, S-A-M-A-N-T-H-A-S-T-O-W-E. I am a Polish Hill resident. I live at 3045 Wigan Street. My husband owns a business in the community, one of only a few businesses in the community that isn't a bar. So I don't need to say what everyone else has already said. The infrastructure issues, the landslides. Like, I think it's embarrassing that we're even proposing this after we did just have a landslide and a sinkhole. Has anyone drove over the 28th Street Bridge recently? You can see the metal in it, like, and you want to add more traffic into our neighborhood, that bridge is going to collapse. Remember how that bridge collapsed not too long ago? And people warned everybody about it? The sinkhole that just happened? People were warning the city about it, and then it collapsed onto the busway. I think it's, it's just absolutely, it's kind of embarrassing and like shocking and degrading to us as like residents of this neighborhood that you would even suggest something like this when, like, it just, all of these things that keep happening. The amount of times we haven't had water in our neighborhood in the past year for a first-world contrary is insane. Like, I mean, serious, like, how many times do you want to have water? And it's because of the PWSA and all this new construction coming in that is not benefiting any of us. People moving into the so-called affordable housing that they just built, most of us can't even afford that. I bought my house 12 years ago for $70,000. And before that, I rented an apartment for $400 a month up on Bethaven and Street. So I know all about Bethaven and Bigelow Boulevard. I'll say what everyone else said. That Bigelow Boulevard is a highway. People drive very fast on that road. The sidewalk there is not a sidewalk, it's crumbling. All the city steps that go up to there, the city steps that go down to the Heron Station are broke and busted. We need to fix the infrastructure in our neighborhood where you even propose something on this large of a scale. It's just like, it's really mind-blowing. And like, honestly, like, just in general, as like, we pay, we pay our taxes, we're sick and tired of this. We are so sick and tired of like, dealing with these things that do not help. You're not helping poor people in our neighborhood. You're not helping poor people in our neighborhood. I have so many people that had had to move out of this neighborhood because they could not afford to live there anymore. Because a house just across the street from me sold for $700,000. I bought my house for $70,000 12 years ago. That's insane. So this like, oh yes, it's going to offer all these things to what? The transit that there's no longer the transit there? How is it transit oriented development if you don't even have the transit there anymore? It's just, yeah, I don't, I don't know what else to say that everyone hasn't said. I'm just, it's just really like, it's just, we supposedly live in the most livable city? That's laughable. Again, the PWSA, the power outages. We've had power outages in the last week on the first cold days could be because three transformers went out. We had the power go out within three times in 24 hours. And that's not, that's a usual thing. That happens all the time when it gets hot out. How are you going to support these high rises if you, all right, hand talking? But yeah, how are, I just don't know how, just you have to fix the infrastructure that's there before you offer these things. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hi, my name is Marissa Packer, M A R I S A P A C K E R. I live at 3313 Bethoven Street, which would be across the street from one of those dwellings. Parking, I got to give kudos to everybody that spoke prior because they said everything that I wanted to say and I'm not going to expound on that. The parking is an awful issue. The traffic will be an awful issue. The streets are not strong enough to withstand all the weight. It's crumbling as it is after we've had water main breaks, one after the other. That whole street, I mean, they, they have supports under sections of the street. What's it going to do to the rest of this, the rest of the street? I have called the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer and they said that there would not be any new lines built to support two of those dwellings. They would have to run off of the old lines. Wow. Okay, um, parking. Are these buildings going to supply parking for, provide parking? I'm sorry. Provide parking for their tenants? You can't put them on our street. The people on Cargill Street, the poor people on Cargill Street, there's houses on both sides. There's parking on one side. Melwood Street is the overflow for Cargill Street. Bethoven Street is the overflow for Cargill Street. Plus the running waters, the natural running waters, the potholes that those running waters created. The 14 foot, 14 and a half foot wide street that you have to maneuver in the wintertime because they don't salt on Bethoven Street. But they did give us soapboxes this year so we could do our own salting. Yeah, come on. You can't fit the cars that are coming down that are trying to cut, to get by the light, right? You got to worry about your cars getting side swiped and then you got to miss the ice patch, the ice hole and the big potholes. Come on, it's hillside. Topography maps show it as hillside. Leave it as such. And that's all I got to say today.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hello.
Hi.
Uh, my name is Stephanie Teczah, T E C Z A.
Thank you.
I live on Bethoven Street as well. I live on the higher part of the, the slope. So they live a lot, a lot of those folks live on the lower part of the slope. So I wanted to just give you what I have to say. I want to address the proposed rezoning of Bethoven Street, Finland to Heron Avenue. I'm a lifelong resident of Polish Hill. I actually was born up there. Um, I live at 3441 Beethoven since 1990. The infrastructure of Beethoven cannot support the proposed building and volume of people. Over the past four years, we've had an increase of water and sewer, sewage issues. I filed a right to know and received a packet of work orders from PWSA and I decided to print the work orders out for you so you could see how many work orders have been happening. I also wanted to show you that since 2020, uh, we had two issues on Bethoven Street and this is basically in the one block, one big block that you guys are talking about. In 2024, it increased 400%. We now had eight incidences this year. So our street cannot afford anymore, um, extra buildings. Bethoven Street between Finland and Harding is not able to structurally hold enormous buildings built on the hillside where it's uncontrollable flooding instability. When a gas company just recently replaced lines on the other side of Bethoven Street the summer, the heavy dump trucks and cold plane, cold planer created a sinkhole right in front of my house due to the trucks simply parked on the street. So they didn't even do anything. They just parked their truck there. The sinkhole became worse when the planer was replacing the pavement in the center of the intersection of Finland and Bethoven. PWSA had to come back and do an additional assessment of the hole that they just made. And I actually have photos and I have videos too, if you'd like to see of the street, of the pipes. I'm extremely, extremely concerned for my neighbors and homes and properties that actually live right across from the, the steep hillside. I love the idea of affordable housing, but does not mean pushing out current residents. Does it mean boulding them with large construction projects or to, to force out the residents? Bethoven Street is only 14 feet wide and now you have cars parked on the one side. It suffers from frequency coals, water main leaks and power outages and accessible only from steep and icy, icy streets. I know when we come to park into my house when there's a snow day, I have to actually go through Bloomfield and slide into my house because you can't drive up the hills. The increased usage also runs counter to significant recent investment by Domi for traffic calming in this area. PTR also plans to eliminate the 77 bus on Bigelow that would provide transportation to this area as part of their bus line redesign. Even if the 77 would remain there, there was no way that the residents in this new housing would be able to get to the other side of Bigelow. So you cannot cross anywhere over there unless you walk all the way down to the intersection. Lastly, I'm appalled at the comparable building on the Todd page of the abandoned school. So they, what they did is they can, they show us a picture of the front of the abandoned school, but didn't show the whole side of the other part. Um, I do have one suggestion. I actually have two. I would love for you to come down and just drive through the neighborhood and see the two hillsides because seeing them flat like you have on the pictures just doesn't do it justice. Also, there's a huge lot going up Heron Avenue, right near the intersection of Heron and Bigelow that would be great for the same development and it would be easy to walk to, easy to get to the busing and those kinds of things.
Thank you for your testimony.
And lakaka lakane, that means the light in me honors the light in you in Proto Maya, my ancestral tongue. My title is Pomaay, Chakmama, Yehalahi, P O M A J hyphen C H A K M A M hyphen Y A J A L A J I. I'm the chief of the Tuskerora Nation of Aboriginal American People and I'm a chief of medicine, land management and land stewardship with the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. I'm here today to pivot just a little bit and also stand in solidarity with the people who spoke prior to me. I know many of them, that this is all so familiar to my people who lived through the unlawful and since repealed Indian Removal Act. You may not know of that act, but it displaced many of my ancestors and many of my ancestors chose to stand and fight and not be removed and were not removed and we're still here. And I stand again in solidarity with the people who are speaking before me. I just want to mention that my aunt passed after not having water in her home in Homewood for several years because PWSA broke a line on her side of the street and charged her to repair it. She fought diligently not to be charged for something that she didn't do and she left this place in that state. So I'm still going to speak on behalf. And I'm speaking for the many people forced in a situation similar to this and you want to rezone, but not to deal with the infrastructure that's problematic. Infrastructure over zoning changes first. There was a landslide today on Ripley Street. I don't know if you heard it in the newspaper. That's any celebrity. It was a, a pothole, I should say, that opened up the size of a, a manhole that an automobile could actually stand on. Same call, thank you, thank you. Same call, over 10 feet. These are infrastructure issues, not zoning issues, right? And so the asset mine drainage that happens spilling down Lincoln Avenue because of uncapped wells underneath the ground and old gas stations too, that left their barrels underneath the ground is causing a lot of problem in the Lincoln-Limington area. So what is affordable housing? I don't really understand what that is because when I talk to people who are talking about affordable housing, they can't afford the house they live in and it's affordable. I'm going to tell people that I'm going to always stand and speak on behalf of my people who are the aborigines of this land and that we are still here and not to be confused with Native Americans who are Title 25 under the constitution. They have a different agreement and our agreement is outlined within the constitution at Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, that states clearly, and excluding Indians not taxed. And you would have to go to the Boobie A's dictionary that's adapted to the constitution to know what that word Indian in the constitution means because there's connotative language, denotative language, and then there's etymology, what words really mean. So in the definition of that word, the meaning of that word, it says, the aborigines of this country are so-called because we were so-called Indians and we accepted it for the purpose of communication, for the purposes of the constitution, which my ancestors developed the Iroquois Confederacy of Nations, where House Congress Resolution that was developed by Congress, joint resolution stated that it was the Iroquois Confederacy of Nations that developed the constitution. So we're saying as the aborigines, you all and everyone in this room is bound by the constitution. And when you talk about the constitution, you must be talking about free prior and informed consent and you are not seeking it here in Pittsburgh from our people. So we're here and if you need to get in touch with our confederacies and our nations and our nation states and our people, we are available to have discussions about what decisions you're making on our lands because if we look at the history, your people haven't done such a great job.
Thank you for your testimony and for making it in.
She was online initially. Yeah.
Hi y'all, my name is Jacob Klinger. I'm also a resident of Polish Hill. Um, I'm speaking today, uh, I want to be really, really specific with you all. The vast majority of the stuff in the proposed zoning amendments is great, as well intended. You should pass it with some contingencies. One of which is that you should remove the parcels at Heron and Bigelow and Bethoven that have been mentioned. Um, you know, more affordable housing, inclusionary zoning, all that shit needs to, fuck it, uh, go further than it does 10% is not enough. The area meaning incomes attached to that need to be deeper affordability. That's where the actual need is in Pittsburgh. Uh, you do have to regulate that more tightly. I'm not going to get in any fantasies about developers suddenly deciding that they've made enough that they'll lower the prices in some distant time in the future. Like it's the Grinch's all Christmas. That's baby brain nonsense. Um, but, uh, what I would like y'all to do is just not tell people that a hillside isn't a hillside because it's, there's, water goes down, it takes the ground with it. That's what hillsides have been doing for a long time. Yeah. So, um, I've seen it. The water is real. I would encourage you to take a look at it. Uh, it's, it's a problem. It's going to keep flowing. That's my understanding of how water and gravity works. I don't think that's something this or anybody can really regulate. But again, most of what is in these proposed changes is good and is well intended. I would encourage you to pass it with the contingency of removing the specific parcels that are currently deemed hillsides because they are observably hillsides, uh, in, in Polish Hill that I mentioned before. To some other people who spoke previously, I would simply offer that if Pittsburgh's finest cannot determine the difference between the ejection of a nail into a wall and that of a gunshot from a pistol, that perhaps more police is not the solution. Please do pass this, uh, these broad set of changes contingent upon the removal of these parcels. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hi, it's me, Town Smith, S M I T H. Uh, I am one of a handful of people that live on Bigelow Boulevard. I live at 3507 Bigelow. Um, a lot of you have probably been down Bigelow Boulevard and gone as fast as you possibly can because that's what everybody does. My bedroom is on that highway. I hear it all the time. The proposed changes to the zoning on Bigelow Boulevard between Bethoven, having that tall of buildings there will, as many times as people are going to say it's not going to increase parking, is definitely going to come with more people with more cars. Most of Polish Hill, with the exception of Brayton Street and Paulona are two lane roads that only one car can go down at a time, including Bethoven. There are six ways in and four ways out of Polish Hill. One of them is Finland. Finland comes off of Bigelow. So people going 60 miles an hour, rip down Finland, blast that stop sign and just go straight in the neighborhood to use it as a cut through. If there are businesses, if it's rezoned so that there can be businesses and more apartments in that section, there isn't going to be enough, there's going to be too many cars coming down Finland and into the neighborhood just to get to the backside of those buildings. Cause there's no way people are going to be able to stop on Bigelow to utilize those spaces. And also I live in front of the 77 bus that is proposed to be taken away. So to call the, the proposed development on, or not proposed development, the proposed zoning changes on Bigelow and Bethoven and saying that those would be a transit oriented development, doesn't make sense if you're taking away the bus that would stop in front of those buildings and then have those people walk all the way down to Heron Avenue. Cause that's a really long, steep walk, especially with groceries. I've done it. I've walked to the strip and biked to the strip all the time. It's brutal. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, I forgot, sorry. Uh, I also want to say that there is no way to cross Bigelow Boulevard as Stephanie said, uh, specifically because there was a pedestrian bridge at Finland Street that was knocked down and never replaced. And that's because Bigelow Boulevard is a highway. And because it's a highway, it means the city of Pittsburgh has limited jurisdiction over its management and safety improvements. So we can try and talk to Pendon as much as we want, but they're never going to replace that bridge. They also filled in the tunnel that goes underneath Bigelow Boulevard so that people can safely get from one side of Heron to the other. They just filled it with concrete. Yeah. So now the only safe way for us to cross. And there's no crosswalk painting there. So basically the only way that we can go is like on a hope and a prayer when the light's red, because you've been down Bigelow and people just go right through that red light. The other way to cross is to go all the way to the other end by Bloomfield Bridge and Bigelow Boulevard and go up the stairs and down to the other side, which is not handicap accessible at all. And there's no sidewalks. So we're talking about transit oriented development where nobody can actually walk. There's no handicap accessibility and there's no bus potentially in front of it. And I'm for affordable housing and I'm not against development. I think it'd be great if we had retail spaces and we had places where we can have businesses as long as they're businesses that are run by people in our neighborhood, not, I don't know, when you go down to Butler Street in Lawrenceville, it's just 90 hair salons. There isn't a grocery store. There isn't anywhere that makes sense for people, like working people in the neighborhood, regular people in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
That's it.
We appreciate your testimony.
Hi, my name's Augustine Pianati, P I O N A T I. Yes, ma'am.
So, um, might I ask for a little bit of leniency here on crowds whenever somebody's speaking because the challenge I'm understanding is that our court reporter with all the echo and all the speakers, it's getting challenging. Some of you that have already been up and had an opportunity to speak, I don't, I know that it's not a matter of being disrespectful, but it is a matter of not being able to get it on record and then the person that's speaking their testimony not being fully appreciated. So, um, if we could just keep that to a halt, that would be greatly appreciated and allow folks to really be able to give their testimony fairly. Thank you so much. I'm sorry.
Uh, thank you. Augustine Pianati, last name P I O N A T I. I also live at 357, 3507 Bigelow Boulevard and I am coming out in opposition to both of the proposed zoning changes. I think the biggest thing is the height, aside from all of the other infrastructure things. And once those are all zoned, then we really have very little input with the developers that come in. Myself, I'm a self-employed contractor and I find these projects are very exclusionary towards me and other people who have small, uh, independent companies. These favor large developers. And when it really comes down to it, the, the base issue between affordable housing is the, the income gap, wage inequality. So when you have these massive development firms that come in and build these huge buildings, it squeezes out small people that can't buy their own homes or small companies that want to maybe do a small affordable development on their own. I, uh, I with my father bought that building on Bigelow Boulevard, condemned from the city, spent eight years renovating it and now me and my fiance live in there and we have three affordable, it's one unit upstairs and we rented out well below market rate. It took us almost nine years to get that point. So I understand there's a lot of work that goes to this, but creating affordable housing is a long process. It takes community input and to do it on a large scale is really tough. And I think that if you're to do it with a blanket statement, it's not, it's not a good idea. So I'm urging that the planning commission does not pass on these zoning amendments to those two parcels. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hi, I'm David Williamson, W I L L I A M S O N. I just want to say, uh, people shall punk. There, we need more, more buses, not less, and we don't need a bunch of skyscrapers in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hi, my name's Claude LaVallee, C L A U D E L A capital V A L L E E. I live at the 3551 on Bethoven. I've lived in Polish Hill for about 10 years. Um, and I'm not going to repeat what most of my neighbors have said. I, I agree with all of it and I left some comments online. I agree with all of it, and I left some comments online. I want to emphasize a couple of things. One thing that I'm really, really concerned about is if we get really tall buildings, like 85, 90-foot buildings, and it starts, we start with one more building that's 90-foot, another building that's 90-foot, the standard height becomes changed, and then we're going to become, you know, more developers that come in and are going to say, well, we already have four, we already have five neighborhoods that are, or buildings that are 90 feet high. That's the standard in the neighborhood. That is not the standard in the neighborhood. The standard is about three stories high. We have two exceptions, one that is uninhabited, the school, and the other one that's the high-rise, John Paul Plaza. Those are exceptions. Those are not the standards to meet. They're exceptions, and I want them to stay the standard, or the exception, rather, sorry. I want those two exceptions to stay exceptions and for the standard in the neighborhood to stay standard. One thing that I also have not heard a whole lot about is the, well, pollution both on Bigelow and along the railway down the hill. Houses that live along Bigelow, people who live there are exposed to a lot of pollution, noise pollution, rumbling. There's a lot of rumbling when a truck comes by. I don't live on Bigelow. I live on Bethaven, and I get the rumbling from the trucks that go by. And then also just the pollution from all the dust that's, that, you know, gets moved from traffic. That is even worse along the railway. There's a lot of rumbling. Again, I don't live along the railway. I live a few blocks up, but I feel when there is a very heavy train that comes by, I feel it. So I can only imagine people who would live right along that railway, I don't think is really appropriate or healthy for residential. I think, you know, right now it's zoned industrial or partly industrial, and I think that's more appropriate. I don't think I'd want to wake up at night with a train that has derailed or, you know, a ton of pollution and asthma problems and stuff like that. And I'd like to keep Polish Hill a nice, green, tree-covered, walkable neighborhood. I agree with the affordability intent, and I really like the, another part of some rezoning that is about accessory units, and I think that should be explored. I think that's a really splendid idea, but these high-rises are not so much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
My name is Catherine McConnell. I live at 3326 Melwood. I've lived in Polish Hill for 22 years, and I lived on Bethaven Street for 19 of them, I think. I became a real estate agent after I moved to the neighborhood, and I have sold a lot of houses in the neighborhood, some of which have experienced some serious structural issues as a result of the hillside. Some of them are new construction, the new construction homes on Melwood that went through the city process of getting all the engineering, the LSO and the SSO inspections done. I've talked to the builder even, and he said, oh, they were all inspected by the city. They're sinking. Some of these owners are having to spend $100,000 plus to shore up these new construction houses. So I, it gives me no faith that the city is really going to do, not just to do diligence, but they even know what the potential is here with these vulnerable hillsides. When I first walked down Bethaven and saw the signs posted on the hill, on the posts, I thought, wow, this has to be a mistake. Like this, this, this is hillside zoning, isn't it? And I went home and I looked it all up, and I thought, oh, my gosh, these aren't zoned hillside. This is an insane piece of property to pick for something like this for so many reasons, but the structural, infrastructure, water issues, being next to Bigelow Boulevard that is loud and noisy. We had, when we lived on Bethaven, a car flew over the guardrail and smashed into someone's yard one year. I mean, it is a major highway. No one would want to live butted right up to that. I mean, and the setbacks aren't there anyway, so it may be a problem for zoning anyway, and it should be because there's no distance. No one in affordable housing, any kind of housing, no person would really want to live right up against that four-lane highway. It's just not right. I, I just wanted to say something about the jewel of the neighborhood that we have. I mean, I can remember the first time I flew over the neighborhood going to the Pittsburgh Airport, and I looked down and I thought, oh, my God, there's my neighborhood, and it's all surrounded by trees. It's like this little green island kind of in the middle of the city. I grew up in California. I, I'm very familiar with a lot of new construction, big buildings. Pittsburgh is so unique and beautiful for so many reasons, and this neighborhood is just an example of why Pittsburgh is, you know, a really special place. Let's keep it that way. Thanks.
Thank you for your testimony.
Andrew Hussain, H U S S E I N, no relation to the historically bad one. But anyway, though, I'm not unsympathetic to some of the comments here about, you know, low-income neighborhoods or Sheridan. I've had family in Sheridan in the past, and I myself am for in low income, so I'm certainly under no delusions that there aren't bad people that are low-income or pretending to be to get stuff that they shouldn't be entitled to. But I am legitimately, even though you can't tell, disabled for low income. I use low-income housing, and my family and myself have, for 35 years, majority of my life, had an address that in some fashion or another has been considered officially a Pittsburgh address. Until this year in my adulthood, after 35 years of saying I am a Pittsburgh resident, I experienced the lovely joys of being displaced thanks to slum lords who can't manage their properties for shit and say, screw you, you're poor, deal with it. But slum lords aside, I can relate to some of the comments here because of the last three places that they've been moving us every couple months until they find permanent housing for us, which they just did finally for me. Unfortunately, my last two lovely places, I can relate to highways. My last place before where I just moved to last week, McNightmare Road, how fun. And then, as if that highway wasn't enough, now my new permanent residence outside of the city of Pittsburgh is part of lovely North for Sales on Highway Route 30, where apparently the invention of the sidewalk still hasn't caught on yet. And infrastructure, you know, is an issue. So, and that's why we're here. We're talking about infrastructure issues, but there's other issues, you know, there's society issues and other things. So I'm not really taking one side or another here, other than there definitely needs to be something done about more affordable housing because that's why I couldn't stay in the city of Pittsburgh. Guess what? All the affordable housing, the waiting lists are longer than this line has been here today and will probably continue to be to speak. And then on top of that, you know, it's ridiculous. It's like that people mention inspectors and not being able to do, you know, things right. It's funny how inspectors and you people here who are making the decision-makers, you know, have to do, have a job to do. It's part of your job, and then clearly you're showing you can't do it if you can't figure some of these things out. I mean, my goodness, people mentioned here cops mistaking using a tool for using a gun, frickin' mistaking, you know, trying to call a hillside anything but a hillside. So it's like, it's your job. You know what happens when I was employed before I became disabled and you don't do your job? You don't have that job very long.
Thank you for your testimony.
I'm Rosemary Saunders out of 207 Climax Street. This is the first time I've been here, and I'm, I don't know what the, I mean, the zone code is, but every time I call y'all for some work for me to do for my house, y'all don't do it. So why should I amend y'all's zone? Y'all want to change things. I like where I live at. It's easy for a bus drive down, down South Hill Junction. Yes, I'm nervous.
That's okay. Just take your time. Don't go too fast.
So y'all talking about different places in Belsova. Everybody liked your house. Everybody liked where they live at. So why are y'all going to change people to move somewhere else to set aside y'all? People like taking a bus down to South Hill Junction to go wherever they want to go. So that's all I got to say. I think the zone is crazy.
Well, thank you for coming in and giving your testimony.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Tim, last name Cauleen, C A U L E N. Thank you, Commission, for hearing what you've managed to gather as a real community voice. I hope you take into account that zoning in front of the needs of the community base and the community voice that have real issues and real needs to the value of their properties and the infrastructure that surrounds their properties should be not considered in front of the money grab of development with, with the idea of an imaginary market that comes from elsewhere. It's not even in support of us as residents in a new housing plan. It's in support of an imaginary market that exists outside of Pittsburgh, and it's of a different economic level than the current stakeholder group that you have at your disposal who are willing to compromise. Please understand the grace of compromise can come from your listening to the real needs of this neighborhood. I am against the zoning provisions without a community benefit package.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is Carmen Brown. I'm from the Lincoln-Limington community, and one of the things I wanted to say is that I'm very, very disappointed with the planning commission. Don't have no faith in you. And really, to be honest, you need to, you all need to be investigated about some of the decisions that y'all have made. I've been here quite a few times. I'm pretty sure y'all remember my face. But also, I wanted to say something about, about this development and about affordable housing. I want to explain that there's two different types of affordable housing. There's the low-income housing, and then you have the developers, you know, their affordability. And most of the affordability right now, the building right now, is the developer's affordability. So that means that at 50% AMI, 50%, 60%, 80%, your 50% AMI is going to probably start, and I don't know the math because there's a math behind this. So you're going to at least be paying, when you hear 50% AMI, area median income, you're going to be thinking of, think about $1,000 a month, okay? When they talk about affordability, don't let them trick you because they're playing with words. That's what they do. And so, you know, there's no, there's no, like I said, no low income. Now, they passed this inclusionary zoning, and that still ain't helping nothing. But, you know, but again, don't let them trick you about affordability. And like I said, you know, with the, with the developers, because developers got their own affordability math that they use, and that's, and that's starting at $1,000, why people is wondering like, why you keep saying affordability, affordability? That's because, you know, again, that's, these are the developers. This is how they do it. This is what they do. So I just wanted to let you all know, and also, too, wanted to let you know that right now, that I was here on September 3rd, and there was a recommendation that was made by the zoning board that was passed that was erroneous. So I'm in court right now, so I'm just letting you all know. If you don't like the decisions from the, from the planning commission, then you go and sue them. You know, you, the recommendations, you can take them to court because I'm in court right now battling with y'all, okay? And I will win because I told y'all when I came last time that I wasn't playing with y'all. So I'm in court right now, so letting people know recommendations can be appealed. File a notice of appeal if you don't agree with this. And I agree with you all. Everybody should have a say in their community if you, whatever you want. Okay, I like low-income housing, but guess what? A lot of people in other communities don't like low-income housing, but everybody still has a right to have what they want built in their community, and nobody should be trying to force or take their voices away, and that's what I see what's going on. That's why I'm in court right now fighting, okay? So I just wanted to let everybody know I'm glad to see y'all here. I'm glad to see everybody out here, and keep fighting. Don't give up. Keep fighting these people because they're wicked and they're, and they're doing criminal stuff. So just continue to fight, y'all.
Thank you.
Is that it, a public testimony?
Are there anybody else to testify in person for this?
This is actually for the, for the first. Are you wishing to speak on that? Do you?
Okay. Make a 10-minute break before we take people online.
Yeah, maybe that would be a good idea.
So we do have many people online, but I think we're going to take a 10-minute break so we can all get to the bathroom and, you know, stand up.
Hold one moment. We're going to let you give testimony, and then we'll take a 10-minute break before we move into the online.
The only comment I have related to TOD is that there seemed to be a little bit of spot zoning.
I'm sorry, could you state your name?
Yes, Sean Kiplin.
Okay.
The only comment I would have to the TOD zoning, which is great, I love it, is that there seemed to be a little bit of spot zoning, and I was wondering if that should be expanded to include UI-zoned parcels within those same areas like the walk shed so that they're already approved for multifamily. That's it.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the testimony. Court reporter, did you get that?
Yeah, did he say his name?
It is Sean Kiplin.
Kiplin.
Can you spell that, please? K I C H L I N E. Sean is S E A N.
Great, thank you.
S H A W N, S H A W N.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
10 minutes?
Yes, please, and thank you.
We will come back at 4:55, and we'll take testimony from the people who are attending remotely. Thank you.
I need to use the girls. The only other thing I need to do is make sure the commissioners are online.
Alexa, set a timer for 10 minutes.
10 minutes, starting now.
68 people online. We should get a restroom break.
Where did you get this huge?
Okay.
Sarah, sir, whatever.
Let's get at least a restroom in.
They were all good.
I have 10 minutes I can talk. I have 10 minutes I can talk.
Yeah, can you fix it so you can?
I, it just, it won't tell me today. I mean, what? It just, it won't, usually.
They don't.
I'm committed to it. Just, it just won't say that.
Won't tell me where the cameras are?
I, so they said we would stay, but honestly, I wish we would put it to another grade. It seems like it.
How much was it, Doc?
Huh?
How much was it?
What am I running on? Hold on, I can't turn on the light here. I did, I got ground turkey on the street, I'll pull them in. I've got pound unsalted butter. I got some spinach ricotta raviolis just to have.
Excuse me, can you put her mic on mute because people can hear you? Holly.
Yeah, okay, okay, great. I'm sorry. I can't, you're not telling me.
No, that's okay. I just didn't want your.
No, I appreciate that. That's very sweet of you. Let me see. Wait a minute. I'm going to turn this off and see if it stays off, okay? You can tell me if you can hear it. One second. Thanks, dear. I love computers.
I'm right with you. Okay, that's better. Okay, that's better.
Hello. So, okay.
Hi.
Hi there. Okay, just checking that commissioners are with us. Sorry for the delay. I know that, I appreciate you all sticking with us here in the moment. Court reporter, are you with us?
I am. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're going to go ahead and resume here. I'm going to kick it over to Vice Chair O'Neill, and she'll give us the roadmap here. Vice Chair O'Neill?
We'll resume where we're at, and then at the end of that, we can go ahead and, you can say it now. That's fine.
Okay. Okay. Um, so, thank you all for hanging in with us. We do require a quorum to operate and take official action, including even a recommendation. We appreciate you all hanging in. We know it's late. There is another action after this map amendment, and we're not going to make you all stay here that long. That's just not going to happen. So what we're going to do now is take testimony on the map amendment from the people who are online. We will have a commission discussion and potentially a vote. We will table the item, the last item on the agenda, which is.
Housing Needs Assessment zoning amendments.
The Housing Needs Assessment zoning amendments. So if anybody is hanging on in person or online for the housing need zoning amendments, we will reschedule that for January. So there will be no formal action on that tonight. Thank you for hanging in. So there will be no formal action on that tonight. Thank you for hanging in if you were hanging out for that. So we will jump right back into transit oriented development zoning map amendments. And we will take testimony from those people online, please. And just a reminder, because we're coming back, three minutes for testimony. I will let you know if you are going over, and if I let you know, please wrap up. All right, go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. We have, it looks like about eight or nine folks wanting to provide testimony. I'll go in order of how you are showing up on my screen.
Hold just one moment. Hold just one moment. Excuse me. For those of you in the back, we do apologize. We know that we had a delayed start. We're about to listen to those online and are going to need to hear them. You are welcome to stay, but if you could get on the other side of the glass, just so that everyone can hear and the court reporter can take recording. Thank you.
Thank you.
So first up, we have Chris Beam. Please state and spell your name for the record and note your address.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Christopher Beam. I live in Bloomfield at forty-seven zero five Lorigan Street. I'm speaking on behalf of ProHousing Pittsburgh. I wanted to point out that this transit oriented development proposal, the map amendment, is common sense. Our transit system today is not currently well suited for our travel patterns in and around Pittsburgh as people have stopped commuting downtown for their jobs and instead are working from home or from cheaper office buildings outside the city. And so in order to preserve our transit ridership, our levels of service, we need more businesses and houses near the expensive transit infrastructure that we have today for, so we can better utilize it. We need to rezone lots basically along the entire East Busway and Light Rail. And so I strongly encourage you, we as ProHousing Pittsburgh strongly encourage you to recommend this transit oriented development plan. I do want to offer some critical feedback on this, however. It seems quite misguided for the Department of City Planning to release a proposed transit oriented development plan with plans for basically every station in and around Pittsburgh, and then to only implement it for three neighborhoods. It took them well over a year to do it in just three neighborhoods, and based on the hearing today, it's not going well. I think they need to reform their approach, maybe just statically define any distance from fixed guideway infrastructure, just broad based upzoning, allowing small businesses, apartments, like the kind of common sense mixed use that I have testified before you so many times that we need to legalize just anywhere near a transit station. It's just so common sense, and it's so infuriating that we're trying to do this in such a targeted way. I think the complaints before about potential spot zoning, like I do think that is a potential concern. We just need to do this everywhere around our transit infrastructure. We need to build new transit infrastructure. Part of that needs to be upzoning along the corridors that we want people to ride transit, which is so important for a healthy city. So we strongly encourage you to recommend this. I hope city planning does better in the future. Thank you.
All right.
Morgan Shaw, please say your name for the record and note your address.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Morgan Shaw. I live at two-six-zero Shady Avenue. I'm testifying today because I am somebody who does not own a car in Pittsburgh. I rely on the bus. I rely on my bicycle. I rely on walking to get around. Me and my poodle both do that. And the more, I actually, I live in Shadyside. I live very close to the East Liberty Busway Station, and I'm very, very thankful that they built the amount of housing they did near the East Busway that they've already done, because it means that I can afford my apartment where I live now. I live in a much older apartment than the stuff that's on the busway right now. But because they built that housing, that means that my apartment isn't $2,000 a month. It's instead $1,200 a month. So I'm very thankful that they did that, and I strongly encourage the planning commission to recommend this, these changes to city council so that we can get this stuff through, because every year we don't do it. Housing gets more expensive, and living a transit, living, living life dependent on transit gets more and more difficult. If we want the infrastructure that we have to last and to generate enough tax revenue to actually pay for the infrastructure we want, we need more people living on these corridors, people who can live without cars, people who can take advantage of our great transit network. I used to live in Memphis, Tennessee. I had to have a car because living without one is very, very difficult, but now I can because of the bus network, and I want it to stay that way. So please recommend these changes. Please expand your approach. We really need to think about how, like the previous commenter said on the, online, Chris said, we need to make this broader. This is, this kind of targeted upzoning generates this really scared, afraid, targeted pushback because people see those lots next to their house and all they can see is a ninety-foot building. And because you've decided to target it, people feel targeted. So I think we should really do this more broadly. We need to make this a regular thing throughout the city of Pittsburgh. You can't live by the busway and think that it's just going to be the same forever. People want to ride the bus, people want, so that's all I've got for that. Thank you very much. I hope you recommend it.
Thank you.
Stacy DeSae, you may unmute, and please state your name for the record and your address.
Hi, you can hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Stacy DeSae, I was calling, calling in to ask that I know that a lot of letters were emailed in, and I just didn't hear any acknowledgement of the receipt of those. Did you receive those? We mailed them in the day before.
All of the letters that were submitted are included in the record, so we did receive letters.
Okay, so I'll just echo what I know is in some of them, since I represent neighbors living in Lawrenceville, and we live in a community that we absolutely adore. I heard one person comment on our horrible Fortieth Street. Yep, we agree, that can be difficult. But why continue to erode a wonderful community by adding building size that does not match the context in which it lives? And the two plots of land that you have, I was a bit confused. I memorized R M U, but I did not understand. I think Lawrenceville got maybe twelve minutes of discussion when you were going through the communities. So I knew that some reference to industrial use, but it was unclear to me what that meant if there were more stages to try and pass something in lower Lawrenceville. It's confusing to me that we would mix all these very separate communities together to try and pass a zoning across the board in these different, very different communities. And I applaud Polish Hill for their force and abilities to come together as they have today. Lawrenceville had submitted lots of emails, is what we received from our area. And so I asked to not, I, we strongly oppose the amendment, and not opposing affordable housing, but fit into the neighborhood. And you've already added two to three different beasts in our community with these tin can, and you're adding another one in January twenty-five, which we had no influence over. We didn't know when we could have influenced it, but it just got pushed into the deal. And it will destroy the neighborhood that's right across the street from the next tin can on, on the road. So my comments are simply, I oppose it. The other people that wrote emails oppose it, and you're not fitting into our community. If you want to build something, work with the community and do something that actually fits with the culture of the area, in the same way all the other communities have spoken as well. And we do not feel heard, and I do not encourage you to recommend this to the city council. I think it's something that can just implode if you try and do so in the manner that you proposed today. Thank you.
Thank you. And we did, not only did we receive your letters, but I checked the list. We confirmed we received your letter. So anything that came in around that same time.
From other people in the community, thank you. I don't know who does it with the long hair. I can see you, little person. They're on the desk, okay? All right, thank you. Oppose.
All right, next.
Bethany Cameron, please state your name for the record and your address. You have three minutes to provide your testimony.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Just make sure, made that mistake a few thousand times the last few years. My name is Bethany Cameron, B E T H N I, last name C A M E R O N. I live at four-zero-seven Merritt Avenue, Pittsburgh, PA one-five-two-two-seven, and I am speaking on behalf of Mobilify. Mobilify, southwestern Pennsylvania, works to improve regional mobility and transportation. We have a lot of goals in the region to make sure that more folks have more opportunities to access, you know, housing, social opportunities, get to their doctor's, recreation, grocery store. And so when we add transit, it makes those goals doable. The only problem with adding transit and good transit stops is it can make housing unaffordable. And we see this kind of everywhere. And the other thing we're seeing, I think somebody earlier in this public comment period said that they, you know, sold a, somebody sold a house in Polish Hill for $700,000. So we know the housing rates are climbing very fast, and if we don't add a tremendous amount of homes quickly, the rates will keep increasing. So it's really important to increase the amount of homes available for families. I've heard, you know, some folks tell amazing stories about homes that have been in their family for decades and decades, and I think that is such an incredible, wonderful experience to have, and I think that it would be great to open that opportunity to more people, to invite other families and to kind of share that, to make their places, their homes here, that they can pass down in their families as well. Because if we don't mandate inclusionary zoning, you know, basically affordable housing, then the market, the free market's going to decide. And I think, you know, for folks that have dealt with poverty a lot, I'm in that group. We know the free market is not working for us. That side, I think that a broad zoning approach is always the best case scenario because I was actually part of passing inclusionary zoning. I was chief of staff for Deb Gross in District Seven, the first policy in the city a few years back. And, you know, it's, that was really critical and came many years too late. If we can get a much broader approach to zoning, especially when it comes to mandating affordable housing, that will mean that our city can continue to welcome new families like mine to build their homes here, and it will make sure that we have a vibrant city where our kids want to live here too, and not move away and take their brain drain and talent with them. So love transportation, love housing, want to see more of both. And Mobilify encourages the adoption of zoning policies, which enable better transportation, better connectivity, and dense housings, dense housing, which I know is a bit of a cosmetic change because we didn't do a lot of big projects like this in Pittsburgh for many, many years.
That's time. Please wrap up.
Thank you. So essentially, density means tall apartment buildings, and that's going to be different. But it's kind of changed, or we might end up with a Pittsburgh for rich folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Manohar, please say your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioner. Good afternoon, everyone. So my name is Manohar Yarlagada, Y A R L A G A D D A, and I'm calling regarding one of the parcel in Sheridan, which was, the parcel number is four-two, R is in Robert, and two-seven-two. We own this lot, and so across the street, we have a convenience store, which is one of the very few stores left in Sheridan after Family Dollar left. So the lot is used as a, like parking for our store, and there is also an ATM machine across, like outside of the building, which people use frequently, and they park in that lot. So I don't know how this lot got included into this rezoning. But again, like I said, like, yeah, I'm not a real estate developer, nor I don't have any interest of developing this into any kind of apartments or multi-race building or anything. And again, we don't have any intention of selling this to any developer. But yeah, I humbly request to remove our lot, and that's all to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Murray, please note your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, yeah, my name is James Murray. It's J A M E S M U R R A Y. I'm chief of staff for Councilwoman Deb Gross. First off, I'd like to echo a lot of the concerns that Polish Hill residents have brought to you today. I also have testimony from the councilwoman that I'll be reading into the record for you. Thank you for accepting my testimony regarding the decision to rezone sections of the Polish Hill neighborhood for transit oriented development. Transit oriented development policies ensure housing is built near amenities that improve quality of life. I'm in favor of making it easier to add housing density around our city's fixed lines of transit.
I'm sorry, Mr. Murray, you're going to need to slow.
Oh, sorry about that. But yes, I'm, I'm in favor of making it easier to add housing density around our city's fixed lines of transit. However, I do not believe thoughtful consideration was given to the proposal for rezoning a number of the Polish Hill parcels before you today. Allow me to draw your attention to several specific problem areas. The current infrastructure in the area between Bethoven and Bigelow Boulevard cannot accommodate the development allowed by its current zoning. There have been years of sinkholes and collapsed sewers surrounding these sites. Allowing for more intense development could lead to much, much larger problems, such as the ones we saw when in October, a section of Brereton Street fell onto the East Busway, shutting it down for days and costing the city and its residents millions. The parcels along Linoleum Way currently zoned hillside are collapsing. Related to that, there were repairs made along the East Busway that the city budgeted $2.3 million to make. While much of this site may be suited for development, allowing for the excavation of what we know to be unstable land without strict requirements and overview by the planning department could lead to disastrous outcomes. The planning commission should recognize that special considerations should be taken to the environmental conditions present and craft zoning requirements that address them specifically for this site. My offices worked with residents of Polish Hill and the Polish Hill neighborhood to address dozens of infrastructure concerns and failures. These issues are particularly apparent in the portions of the neighborhood that the proposal for you today intends to upzone. I look forward to working with the community, the planning department, and other relevant stakeholders to ensure that transit oriented development efforts are taken responsibly. Today, though, I am asking the planning commission to allow for further input about the risks of upzoning these sites by issuing a continuance on the Heron Avenue Transit Oriented Development Proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Dave Breingen, please state your name for the record and your address, and you have three minutes.
Hi there. My name is Dave Breingen. I'm the executive director of Lawrenceville United. Our address is one-eighteen fifty-second Street, one-five-two-zero-one. Our mission is to improve and protect quality of life for all Lawrenceville residents, and we have close to nine hundred members who call Lawrenceville home. Excuse me. I'm here to speak in support of the proposed rezonings that take place in Lawrenceville. For what's been proposed, these are very limited, modest changes to allow apartments in greater density in areas that are close to transit. I think this only impacts about a total of nine parcels in Lawrenceville. So again, it's very limited, but we think it's a great idea to create housing in transit areas so that lower income folks, people without vehicles, and people with disabilities can continue to live in our community and in our city. In the areas around the parcels that would be rezoned, we have a number of apartment buildings already, including a new low-income housing tax credit project focused on people with disabilities. The properties on Liberty Avenue have an apartment right across the street that was originally constructed as low-income housing as well. And as Father Tom said, some of the parcels that would be rezoned include our neighborhood's largest church, which he leads. Housing for our beloved Capuchin monks, who we are all lucky to have in the neighborhood, as well as St. Augustine's Plaza, which houses many low-income seniors in our neighborhood and which we deliver food to every Friday. We hope these uses are always with us forever in Lawrenceville. Housing for our Capuchins and our older adults and people with disabilities, especially affordable housing, is exactly what our community wants more of, and these rezonings just make it easier to do that over time. So we're in support. Stacy, if you're still listening, we should talk. Just want to, I, I hear that there are some concerns in Lawrenceville, so we'll, I'll follow up with you. I do hear the infrastructure-related concerns of our neighbors in Polish Hill. These sound really serious, and I encourage city planning and the city to work with P W S A and others to find some relief for what sounds like some really frustrating infrastructure issues, on Bethoven especially. And I just want to stress what others have said too, that we do need more comprehensive zoning changes related to equitable transit oriented development. Nine parcels in Lawrenceville really is very limited, and it's not going to update, you know, zoning to meet all of our needs, but it's a good start. So we look forward to working with city planning on the conflict. Thank you.
Thank you.
Apologies. Allison McGary, you have three minutes. Please provide your name and address for the record.
Confirming you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Allison McGary, A L L I S O N, McGary, M C G E A R
and it's not going to update, you know, zoning to meet all of our needs, but it's a good start. So we look forward to working with city planning on the con plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Apologies. Allison McGarry, you have three minutes. Please provide your name and address for the record.
Confirming you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Allison McGarry, A-L-L-I-S-O-N, McGarry, M-C-G-E-A-R-Y. I am a business owner with a property on Butler Street between Thirty-Sixth and Thirty-Seventh Street. I own six properties in the vicinity of the St. Augusta and the Smallman Street and Thirty-Fourth and Thirty-Sixth Street parcel, two of which are directly across the street from Smallman. I'd just like to voice my concerns with regard to the scope of the potential allowable development at this site with the rezoning. Simply rezoning with the buzzwords of affordable housing and transit-oriented development does not guarantee that that's actually what happens once things are built. Best of intentions, but we've seen it time and time again in Lawrenceville. With the execution of potential performance points, the allowable height could be up to 90 feet tall, which is grossly out of scale and context with the surrounding structures. It dramatically changes the parameters of property value and quality of life for the existing residents and property owners that have invested in this neighborhood and helped make it what it is today. Additionally, the population influx, and I take this from the slides that were presented with the potential units listed, the influx of potentially 500 to 600 residents at this two-block location adds to a number of existing parking, traffic, and safety and road issues that we have already, that we're already dealing with on a daily basis. The current infrastructure is already inadequate, and the addition, and this addition would already push further the limits of what we're, what we have. The streets are small, there's mixed vehicles, we have trucks getting stuck on corners all the time. I don't know how we're supposed to take on another 500 to 600 potential residents in that particular area. It seems really misguided. Finally, I will specifically question the rezone of this specific plot on Smallman. Lawrenceville has experienced a rapid and extensive increase in available housing units. If the need is for affordable housing, then let's pass legislation that actually requires a significant portion of what's being built to be affordable. There are plenty of housing available in Lawrenceville. There are vacant units and large development projects that have recently been completed. Additionally, I will say, this is currently zoned as a UI plot. To my understanding, that means that there's an allowable 60-foot build height already for this land, but it is restricted to four stories. My guess would be that the request for this change in zoning has more to do with gaining another 30 feet in height and no restriction on number of stories.
That's time, please wrap up.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to talk.
Thank you.
Jack Billings, please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Jack Billings, spelled B-I-L-L-I-N-G-S. I live at 206 Gladstone Road in Squirrel Hill. I have five points. I'm going to address them quickly. One, I am in favor of the TOD map amendments. Chris Beam spoke to that. Number two, I echo Chris's critical feedback. We should do broad upzoning across the whole city. Instead of upzoning parcel by parcel, consolidate and simplify the zoning code as a whole. A lot of the anger today comes from confusion about the zoning code, because the zoning code, as it is written, is a nightmare. Almost all of Polish Hill was built before the current zoning code was implemented, as was most of Pittsburgh. Most of the buildings in Polish Hill are non-conforming with the zoning code today. All of it should be upzoned to UNC, including the LNC, R2H, RMM, and Hillside Zones. That will allow for more equitable development throughout the whole city and including in the TOD areas, in the walksheds. Point three, for the residents of Polish Hill in Lawrenceville, who want more affordable housing, who want better infrastructure, who want more walkable neighborhoods, all of that comes downstream from building more housing. And that means broad upzoning. To the priest who was the father of St. Augustine Church, St. Augustine Plaza is currently zoned R1A. It is not zoned RMVH. If it fell down tomorrow, it could not be rebuilt. Number four, I want to speak about the Housing Needs Assessment legislation that was tabled until January. I am disappointed that you chose to table it. Most of the legislation is good and will increase the housing supply. Housing delayed is housing denied. By delaying this legislation, we are making the housing crisis worse. And then five, finally, tabling the Housing Needs Assessment, retroactively amending today's agenda is just a huge waste of time to all of the people who came to this meeting, either online or in person, in order to speak to that. It is an insult to everyone who took off time from their work to come here to advocate. And it is an insult to the city of Pittsburgh and to the people who live here to delay the housing crisis even, to delay building more housing in the city and continue making the housing crisis worse. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Next speaker.
Sophia, you have three minutes. Please note your name and address for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sophia Collin. I'm 17 years old. I live at 3407 Bethoven Street. And I hope that as a young person, you can hear me, because I speak for all of my friends and the young people in my neighborhood when I oppose this zoning proposition. I'm currently a senior at the Ellis School, and over the years, I've seen the effects of gentrification firsthand. I've witnessed the aftermath in Lawrenceville, Shadyside, and East Liberty. And at the same time, I've observed gentrification unfolding in real time in areas like Upper Lawrenceville, West End, Squirrel Hill South, and now, once again, the Strip District. Today, I want to focus on the proposed zoning changes between Bigelow and Bethoven Street. The plot of land being discussed is directly across from my house, located on Bethoven Street, which sits just right under Bigelow Boulevard. The land and area being considered is now part of the residential mixed-use zoning plan. This would transform the current multiple housing into a mix of apartments or homes and maybe even commercial spaces and offices, which would impact the character of our neighborhood and the process displaced residents who have maybe lived here for years. It'll allow expensive housing to move in, leading to the rise of rents and the loss of affordable housing, making the neighborhood less accessible to the people who have lived here for years and generations, and even push out longtime lower-income residents. This is not a proper application of inclusionary zoning. Not only does it fail to consider the livelihoods of current residents, but it also doesn't serve the needs or wants of my community. It only benefits the city. If one actually wanted to benefit a neighborhood, it would be my hope that one would ask its residents and stakeholders first. My current house stands at two stories tall, if you don't want to account for my basement. Should this zoning change come into fruition, 60- and 40-foot structures would be erected in front of my house. And if you account for 10 to 12 feet per story of a building, you're looking at five-to-six-story buildings. I'm deeply concerned that further construction, particularly from the proposed zoning change, will only make things worse. There's excessive water damage that has wrecked havoc on both private properties and on the street itself. My elderly neighbor Florence, or many of you may know her as Aunt Flo, is a prime example. I've witnessed firsthand the destruction in front of her house, where her sidewalk was torn apart to repair multiple water main breaks in our already densely populated neighborhood. More construction would only worsen these ongoing problems. I'm worried about losing the land in front of my house, which helps block the noise from the highway above. I'm worried about more through traffic in our already broken-down roads. I'm worried about potential landslides and environmental or electrical impacts, and I'm worried about the sun being blocked out of my mom's garden. In conclusion, if the goal is to truly help our neighborhood, then the first step should have been to ask the people who live here, the residents, who know the challenges, the history, and the heart of this community. By moving forward without our input, you're not serving the neighborhood. You're pushing forward a vision that overlooks those who matter most. I'm willing to propose a reduced and more thoughtful plan, one that allows for growth but represents the people who have lived in Polish Hill for generations. We need a development that reflects the needs and voices of the residents, not just the city's version of progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Congrats, Suzanne.
Kyle Gracie, please note your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Kyle Gracie, and I am a resident, homeowner at 424 Sapphire Way in Gloomfield. I want to mostly just second all of the comments of Jack Billings and just add that in general, we need to build, make it easier to build more affordable housing, which will support creating more demand for transit and make it easier for us to implement more transit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lawrenceville Corporation, please note your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, this is, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, this is Sarah Trubovic. I'm the Executive Director of Lawrenceville Corporation. We act as the catalyst and conduit for responsible and sustainable growth. I want to second what Dave Breengan from Lawrenceville United said. And we, we support the proposed legislation, zoning changes for the TOD, for the parcels in Lawrenceville. We feel like it will benefit the Lawrenceville community by providing more affordable housing, higher density, and mixed-use development, as well as encouraging transit use, increased walkability, and make the transit station more usable. So we appreciate the city taking this initiative. Thanks.
Thank you.
There are no other hands.
No other hands raised. And.
We have one more hand.
I believe that person already spoke. No, this is a different person? Okay, great.
Title, you may unmute, and you have three minutes to provide your testimony. Please state and spell your name for the record.
Greetings. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good, finally. In my cala keen, that's proto mine for the light in me honors the light in you. My aborigine American title is Yahalih Chanal Keen, A-J-A-L-J-I-B hyphen C-H-A-N-A-L hyphen K apostrophe I-N. I am Indians not taxed. And in the Bouvier's dictionary states, Indians, the aborigines of this country are so-called. I am located within the Delaware Territory, as you all recall, Pittsburgh. I am a descendant of the original beings, the first inhabitants stewarding the Americas, including the islands. I am one of the U.S. speakers of America's Aboriginal Environmental Law Protectors and Epa Food Forestry Arts and Culture, who Grand Ika Chief, Poma Chukamya Holihy, is the creator of our indigenous community work. My people are acknowledged in multiple maxims of law, such as your government's constitution, Article One, Section Two, Clause Three, and Excluding Indians Not Tax, and House Congress Resolution 331, whereas my people are acknowledged to the development of the United States Constitution and to reaffirm the continuing government-to-government relationship with my people, the aborigine Americans. We are not to be confused with Title 25 Native Americans or all other socio-political constructs as your government has documented. Therefore, there has been a lack of free prior informed consent from the aborigine American community, all for the purpose of genocide, colonization, ill-conceived policies and codes, unlawful tax, unlawful charge, forced assimilation, industrialism, pollution, and all overall destruction of our ancestral lands have been continuously been constitutional crimes against my people. So honor your oath to the Constitution, Article One, Section Two, Clause Three. I stand with those who honor their oaths to the Constitution. And I also will say, the actions of disregarding those who have constitutional indigenous rights and those who have rights to speak and have input on action steps may, may perhaps occurring within their community prior to a company or companies appearing to rush a development without free and prior informed consent or public testimony. Schedule meetings with the aborigine American communities, as you have today scheduled public comments for your citizens for free and prior informed consent before approving projects that could affect our ancestral lands or territories and our natural resources prior to the invasion of immigrants, colonization, forced assimilation, industrialism, unlawful tax, and the list continues. My people, our ancestral lands from time immemorial had cities, theaters, plumbing, electrical systems, prior to the destruction of our lands. There has been no issues surprising these topics prior to colonization. There have been multiple houses within the area of Homewood that have been abandoned ever since 2009, as far as my information. There have been streets that have been demolished and not taken care of. There has been a recent development of a pothole or a sinkhole in East Liberty. Your government destroyed most of my ancestors' ancestral cities, built over those infrastructures. How is your immigrant ancestors' destructive ways benefiting you now?
That's time, please wrap up.
I will say this again, honor your oath to the Constitution, Article One, Section Two, Clause Three, and excluding Indians not taxed, and I yield.
Thank you.
Allison Knights, please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Allison Knights. I live at 3448 Melwood Avenue in Polish Hill. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, I'd like to start by saying that I'm a little disappointed to hear so many corporate people that are in favor of this, like just going for it. I'm not surprised, especially, you know, Lawrenceville United, especially when the priest from St. Augustine came. I think that's kind of a real shame. I've sat in a lot of these meetings over the last 10 years. The Donny's Place meetings, I've sat for a lot of them, and I know that change is inevitable and that buildings and housing is important, and that housing crisis is an actual issue. I also know that affordable housing is not forever. And I think that even if, like, has been echoed before, even if you can build affordable housing, it might only be for a few years that those affordable houses will exist. Also, the last one of these zoning hearings I was, sat for was the Julian. It was for a height exception. The Julian's construction has affected us a lot this year. The road has been shut down next to my house a ton of times. Also, I'd like to mention, which has not been brought up so far, it was a height exception, I believe, for the Julian, if that's correct. You can correct me if I'm wrong. But someone on May 24th did fall and die, a construction worker, after that, you know, from, from the ninth or 10th story of that building. So it's a safety issue too for the people building these houses, which is concerning. I think, like the neighbors in Sheridan said, that we need to work on our current infrastructure and helping the buildings that exist that we have around us in our own neighborhood. You know, I'd like to second that the water does run through our neighborhood and through our streets and our traffic. And those high-density buildings that we have, Brewers Block and the Julian, they don't offer parking spaces, and I have been told multiple times that's to maximize profits for the investors if they offer the parking spaces, and I understand that they want people to take the transit. However, if you are affording very expensive apartments, you oftentimes have one to two cars. You will have those cars, and they will just go onto the street parking, is the issue. You see that in the Strip District now, in case anybody is confused. They could drive into the Strip District and see that around the Cork Factory, around those sorts of buildings. And I'm sure you guys see it in Lawrenceville. I think, let me check my notes. I know the presenters, oh, the other thing that I'd like to point out is the picture of St. John Paul Plaza that was used. The front of that building is not 90 feet. We talked about this at our community meeting, and it has not been brought up. It's the back of that building that measures 90 feet. We did take a laser measure out and measure it. Somebody in the community did that. That picture is misleading. It's the back of that building that measures 90 feet, not the front. So that's incorrect. Let's see. So I just think that those things are really impactful to the community. And I think I would like to second that there should be a community package offered if it's investors and that the housing offered should be affordable, permanently affordable for blue-collar families, not high-density or gated communities, which, by the way, was what was offered there last time, was a gated community across from the busway, which is why Polish Hill pushed back on that the first time in case it was a
That's time, please wrap up.
gated community. So now it's a 90-foot high-density, no parking spaces. So thanks so much for your time. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Chris Roselot, please provide your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Chris, you need to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, great. Yeah, my name is Chris Rosselo, R-O-S-S-E-L-O-T, as in Tom. I am a resident of Spring Garden in the North Side, 1019 I am a resident of Spring Garden in the North Side, ten nineteen Vaniel Street. And I'm speaking today on behalf of Pittsburgh Community Reinvestment Group, where I am the Policy Director. PCRG is an organization committed to equitable development and expanding access to affordable and quality housing for all residents of our city. I, I was set today to talk about all the amendments, but, so I'm a little disappointed in that, but I'll be prepared for, for January. But I'd like to echo our members in Lawrenceville, and particularly the Lawrenceville United and Lawrenceville Corporation in support of the transit-oriented development projects, as well as the South Hills Junction. PCRG joins other advocates in promoting transit-oriented development policies that will allow us to align housing development with public transit infrastructure, which creates more livable and connected communities and expanding those opportunities near transit hubs will reduce reliance on cars, lower transit costs for families and support a greener future in Pittsburgh. So thank you all for your time tonight. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Okay.
Go ahead, that's you.
What's that?
Oh, so public testimony is now over. We're going to give an opportunity for Commission to go ahead and ask some questions, make some remarks as it relates to this. Are there some questions, Commissioners?
Remarks.
Mark is not questions. I'll just start just, one, I hear you, is what I want to first say that first, because you definitely brought the point home, multiple people, when you say something multiple times, I just want you to know that I'm listening and we hear. Second, I definitely think there should be kind of a reevaluation of the zoning, looking at the parcels and looking at the re-zoning, particularly with more input from everyone that came in today. I think one thing I did want to address is the fact that, yes, the buildings that were shown, when you say ninety-feet-tall buildings, the difference from the buildings that are illustrated there is that in building code, a lot of times when you're allowed a ninety-foot allowable building, they'll look at it ninety-foot from the architectural grade, which is usually the midpoint of the slope. So in many cases, that ninety-foot is taller than what you think it will be, and I definitely agree with everyone in that that seems very egregiously tall for the, for the spaces. So I, I am, to be fair, I, I am a fan of the transit-oriented development, but I do think that hearing all the comments today, there definitely needs to be rework and there needs to be a conversation that is had, because I'm like, when I have ten comments that are saying, whoa, 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 I'm not a fan, and then two people are like, yeah, we're, we're a fan, but we understand that there's problems. That's a, we need to kind of go, I don't want to say back to the drawing board, but maybe we can take two steps back.
Okay. Commissioner Massa?
Okay, so I agree with my commissioner here. In Sheridan, which I've lived for sixty-three years, a long time, actually, everything's on a hill. Every, I believe that those parcels that are being presented would cause an issue with engineering, with hillside landslides on, on the backside of Hillsborough Street. The building that in question is the Senior Center, okay, that's one tall building. Langley High School or Grade School is a tall building, and so is Old Holy Innocence Church or the Jasmine Nireen Building. So you have three buildings and then you want to have, have the ability to build a building ninety feet high. That's only three buildings right around that small area. That's not going to work in my mind. Also, the parcels, I don't think that they can be developed, most of them, or will be developed. But Sheridan has been beat up on for forty years by allowing things like this to happen without, you know, the, the guidance of the neighborhood or anybody that's part of it. Because from one lady mentioned Ben Woods, when he introduced, you know, Scatterside Housing back in the eighties to in the nineties, when the federal government actually, you know, wanted to transition people into neighborhoods, it created gentrification from Broadhead Manor down in those areas there. And people moved into Sheridan, but nobody, people didn't want to leave their, their neighborhoods. And what we're doing now is we're creating something that we don't need to create. Sure, zoning is antiquated, and we need to, we need to figure that out, but at whose expense? You know, we're listening to all these people today that, you know, they're worried, they're scared. You know, I, I agree with the transit-oriented, you know, thing, you know, Sheridan Station. Okay, maybe you could possibly build a building right on that parking lot, but that's about it. And that's up to PRT. So I think we need to go back to the drawing board and work on this a little bit more and get a little bit more input. I would, I didn't even know that there was a meeting at Jasmine Nireen, October fourteenth. I had no idea. So maybe that's my fault, you know, maybe it isn't, but maybe, you know, we need to talk to the people more and try to get more input from everybody. And I understand there's a lot of people just scream and don't really understand what's going on because they're trying to protect their homes and they've been there for sixty-three years like I have. So I just think we need to take a couple of steps back, rethink this process. I appreciate all the work that you, you all have done. You've done a great job. I honestly believe that. It's just, I think we need a little bit more input and a little bit more time to think this over. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Massa. Commissioner Wu?
I, I agree with Commissioner Maza and Commissioner Gammy. I, I think Commissioner Maza's point about the parking lot at Sheridan Station really being, you know, the one place where you might be able to do TOD, I, you know, I, I think that's, that's, that's definitely how I thought about it too. Like, you know, like both Commissioners, I support the concept of TOD. I think I've stated that in multiple briefings that Pittsburgh doesn't have TOD like other cities do. I think the approach here is may, you know, may need to be different. So instead of looking at TOD in existing residential areas, maybe TOD on commercial parcels that are adjacent to the busway or to the light rail or to the, the new BRT. So I, I think that's a better approach than walksheds, and I, I think that's, you know, the approach that most other cities have taken, where TOD is directly on at the station. And, you know, hearing, hearing everyone's concerns about landslides and floodings and, and sinkholes. You know, I, I think, you know, we, we've, we've mostly just been looking at, at this on the map. And, you know, I, I, I've been through Polish Hill a number of times and it is a hilly area. And there are areas that are zoned hillside, areas that, you know, have steep slopes. And I, I do, I, I do understand, you know, that those, those are areas that, you know, might not be able to be developed and maybe should not be. So I, you know, I, again, TOD is, is great as a concept, it, you know, jumpstarts redevelopment in, in certain areas. It's, you know, I, I, I think with the Citywide Comp Plan, this is, you know, this, that, that's an opportunity for TOD to really, you know, be fleshed out in the, in the more broad manner, as, as some folks put it. And, you know, I, I think, you know, we, we, we do need to go back to the drawing board, I, I think, is, you know, what I'm saying. And I, yeah, I, I know that there are some areas like Lawrenceville where there's some support for, for it. But I, again, I, I don't think we can really spot zone. We, we need to look at more of a comprehensive approach and maybe, you know, a different approach, you know, instead of walksheds, looking at transit stations. We, we do have some successful examples of that, like East Liberty, the Transit Station there. You know, there, there's, there's obviously, you know, areas like, like parking rides where, where this type of thing can be done. So, you know, looking at PRT properties first, looking at commercial zone properties first, rather than looking at residential parcels.
Exactly. Include?
Okay. It looks like Commissioner Dick, and I apologize if I'm wrong, but you're not muted. Were you looking to say something, Commissioner Dick?
When everyone else is finished, I'll be happy to.
Okay. I, I mean, the floor is open. I'll move to Commissioner.
I, I'm very much in favor of transit-oriented development, but I, I am thinking very seriously about whatever other Commissioners have said. My one, I guess, proposal would be a condition on the transit-oriented development, which would say that serious consideration should be given to specific geological and infrastructural difficulties in a particular area before TOD is implemented. That, I would just propose that as, as a, as a condition to be placed on, if we were to pass it. Okay?
Okay.
It's, okay, just a, just a one little amendment. Okay?
Okay, very good. I'm gonna move to Commissioner Blackwell because her hand is up, fair and reasonable.
Holly, are you done?
Yes, she said yes.
Okay. First, like, I want to that all the community residents know that like my fellow Commissioners, you were heard. I hear a lot of fear of their community changing. My fear always creeps in when development happens. Like others, I am in favor of the TOD, but with the conditions that Commissioner Holly just said. And also, for clear, for clarification, I heard several times tonight, as well as watching the city council meetings. I just want the community residents to know that the Planning Commission did not create this document. We are reviewing it and voting on whether or not it should be passed to City Council for final vote. Madam Chair, is that correct? Because I've heard several times the frustration with us as a commission. And it's been stated, and I just want for the record for the community to know that we did not create this as a commission. So I just, I think that's important for the community to know that. And maybe the staff can repeat where it was, who actually wrote this and our responsibility before we move to a vote. Because I heard it several, several times at City Council, as well as here. And it's important for community residents to know our role and our responsibility here this evening. And with that, I'm done.
Thank you very much, and we'll get clarification on that after all Commissioners have had an opportunity to speak. We'll kick it back over to Mr. Dash. Assuming.
Do you, Commissioner O'Neill, want to speak?
Yes, I'm gonna do that first, yes. Commissioner O'Neill, would you like to?
Sure. I'll be mindful of everybody's time and try and keep it short. I want to appreciate the work that was done on the TOD. I think it's a laudable goal and, you know, I'm not saying that I would vote against this, but I do think there needs to be some additional community involvement and some additional information provided. I work in the zoning space and it is complicated. It is not straightforward as much as we try and make it to be. We, as much as zoning could be. So I understand where the fear comes from. You know, we're zoning for increased density or we're evaluating zoning for increased density. It doesn't necessarily mean that that development will go forward, but we want to have sufficient guide rails on any development that is, you know, proposed in the future. Particularly looking at sloped areas, there are protections for slopes over fifteen percent and over twenty-five percent, which is that steep slope area that was mentioned earlier, as long as landslide-prone and undermined areas, which are most of the city. So there are some geotechnical protections there, but when we look at those on a map, it certainly makes a big difference when we hear from the community what the actual concerns are. I can tell when there's a slope somewhere when I look at a map. But, you know, whether you have water running and other complicating factors, you know, issues with utilities, that's not reflected on the maps that, you know, any of us see. I wish it was. I wish we had a better mapping system. But so I think it's really helpful to understand that there are specific issues with the properties that were identified for this that warrant additional review and, you know, more discussion with the community. I know that there were discussions with the community, there were public meetings, but that, you know, when you have something of this scale, I think it warrants a little bit more discussion. So I'm more in favor of postponing this or tabling it for a future meeting to allow for more community engagement and some more evaluation. But I'm happy to hear what everybody else wants to say.
Thank you, Vice Chair O'Neill, and that's exactly what I would propose. I don't think that, I believe that, one, thank you, all of you who came out to give testimony that you're here in person, as well thanking those that are online. You all have spent a significant amount of your time today, but you spend a significantly more amount of time in your neighborhoods and in your homes. And you have shown up and shown out to let us know how much that means to you. And that is very valuable as we, you know, sit here on this side of a presentation. You know, I want to make it clear, you know, there were some, you know, pretty strong words that were thrown out there, like, you know, maybe some of the city staff are wicked or maybe even Commission. And, you know, our intent is, is to do the right thing. And I think that without your voices here today, making sure that we understood your position as well as the improvements that are trying to be made. You take those two and you recognize that you still need a little bit more work. I also would be in favor of tabling and holding for additional conversation and dialogue. I think it is only fair to ensure that Mr. Dash can add some clarifications and that we just need a little bit more work to do here, because there are some neighborhoods where there have been, there has been a level of support and some comfort. And then there are other neighborhoods where there's a threshold of not just fear factor, but some things that really need to be figured out. And given the fact that, you know, all aren't in, in alignment or balanced, we've got to get that in balance, but I don't think we scrapped the whole thing. And so I would be in favor of tabling, holding, and then kicking it over Andrew for you to make maybe some clarifications. I think there might have been a few questions in there, I'm not sure, because I know it's been a significantly long day. And we, we want to be mindful of that for all of you also.
Maybe to make some clarifications, I don't want to sound too defensive. I will say, I mean, to some of the claims, I mean, not only myself, but other staff have been to each of these sites that we are looking to rezone. This is not something that, you know, I think there were a lot of claims that, you know, that we are, you know, ignorant or not, you know, not aware of the conditions on a lot of these sites. And, you know, I would do want to defend the, you know, the, the staff and the process relative to how we came here. And, you know, the information that we provided, not only to the Planning Commission and the, in the briefings before today, but today, you know, were, you know, like, I mean, there was a lot of thought that came into that. I think we heard a lot of things from, you know, from residents, you know, that, you know, some related to the zoning, some, you know, related to, you know, other issues that development can have an effect on. You know, and I think that, you know, there is, you know, I mean, you know, to, you know, to that end, you know, there is a need, you know, to, you know, and we are more than willing to continue conversations to ensure that what's being proposed willing to continue conversations to ensure that what's being proposed, you know, is in line with our intentions, which is to be able to provide more opportunities, you know, for, you know, for multifamily development in the right locations, you know, and, and specific to it being oriented around transit. And so, you know, so I, I mean, you know, at the same time, you know, I think there were a lot of maybe, you know, conflicting pieces that we heard both from the commission and from testimony, you know, that I might, you know, ask for some clarification on, you know, as to, you know, there's a lot of discussion of, you know, of doing something more broadly. And there's a lot of discussion on, you know, on being more, you know, being more targeted. And I think that, you know, we heard those things, you know, I heard those things, and I can't speak for the rest of staff, you know, as maybe points of conflict, or, you know, of, of differing feedback. And so, you know, I, I think that, as a baseline, you know, we are definitely, you know, more than willing to work with community organizations, with advocates and partners, with residents, with council members, to be able to have more conversations in each of these areas prior to, you know, prior to coming back. But I think we'd want to, you know, understand from the commission after hearing all the testimony, after making your own comments, you know, as to what that direction is. Because, you know, like, working with residents and tweaking proposals or looking at how proposals might be able to change to fit the feedback that we've heard, is a lot different than potentially changing the strategy, which, you know, which, which is what came from the TOD report, from PRT station area planning, from the housing needs assessment. And so, you know, maybe to get some clarity from the commission there. And I, you know, I think, you know, agreement and a willingness to be able to continue to work with folks, you know, to, 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 you know, bring this proposal back to the commission.
And I do agree with you, Mr. Dash, there is a little bit of conflicting there based on what was heard from commission. And I'd like to make sure that we get that clarified. I also want to commend both staff and, and residents of the city, because this is what these moments are for, right? It's this back and forth dialogue and the ability to be able to sit here today and, and have some impact on whatever that change looks like. Commissioners, it sounds as if we are asking for a continuance, but I want to get clarity on exactly what that means. In the meantime, does that look like maybe some meetings with council of impacted residents? And, and maybe council in that area, leading some conversation? Let's get some clarity around, so that we can inform.
So I think that means, I think, at least from my perspective, I think we want to make sure that every house that's like in those properties are hit, and that they are brought to the meeting and coordinated with. Because as we saw today, everyone here was a resident of the area that was going to be affected. So I think that is kind of something to make sure that everyone that is a resident of the affected areas will be present in the conversation. So that, again, like, all of these infrastructural issues that you won't really know about the water, like shedding like mad unless you're there when it rains, you know, during a ridiculous rainstorm. So there's making sure that they can bring that input to the conversation. And the historical input as well, as far as like, how that space has been developed in the past and how it can be changed moving forward.
Okay, so that can be led maybe by council?
Council.
Then council can reach out to the, those impacted. Is that a?
Would you clarify council, please? You mean city council? Or do you mean legal council?
I mean council as in their city council person.
That's what I wanted, want you to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm kind of just feeling around for if I'm on the, on the right page. So are we confirmed that that, that's the direction, that there should be a little more work between now and bringing it forth in January, as it relates to communication and discussion?
I, I think January is too soon, number one, because we're in the holiday season. Okay.
Yeah.
I would need to know what the timeframe is, because input takes time, and we want to get it done right. I don't want you to say, okay, let's come back in January 20th or February. I want to make sure that we schedule certain meetings. We make sure everything's done before we go through this again. We want to make sure. I don't want to take one bite of the apple and we have to come back and change it. Okay. I agree with what's going on, but the process has to be the process, no matter how long it takes. I can't, I'm not in favor of saying, okay, we're coming back in February. I think we have to do the process first, figure this out, and then we schedule the meeting. That's, that's what I believe.
So if we were to table, and this is a question for, I guess, Andrew and Cory, if you table, what is the notice requirement for this?
So I think that probably the
Sorry, who's speaking?
This is Cory Layman.
Okay.
Zoning administrator extraordinaire.
Of course.
And what did you say, Andrew?
This is Cory, Cory Layman, zoning administrator. Good, good evening, everyone. Glad to be here. I, I think in terms of, just to sort of answer the procedural questions, I think commission is providing staff guidance on what you would like to see during a tabled or continued hearing. The hearing is, if you continue, it is continued. So there's not a conditioned, there's not a condition to a continuance or anything like that, just from a
Okay.
procedural standpoint. I think what I would recommend as, you know, just knowing procedures, and, and knowing some of the unpredictability, particularly with the holidays, is that you, you know, this has been duly noticed. People are following. I think that you, you know, I recommend continuing it to, that was the next meeting in January is?
I thought it was like mid.
Fourteenth of January.
It's mid-month.
With, with the ability, you know, I, I maybe advise staff to work with community partners and, and council members to coordinate any necessary additional, you know, community input and discussion as, you know, and I, I think, I think we, I would request that we have a little bit of flexibility built into, into what that looks like, because it requires, it requires coordination from that side as well.
Right.
Tomorrow in Pittsburgh, you'll see snowy rainy weather.
Thank you. I better get home now. I better get home now.
Right. So Commissioner Wu? Do you have a question for Mr. Layman?
No, I was going to chime in on
Oh, go ahead.
What Commissioner Gammy and Commissioner Maza just said.
Okay.
I, I mean, I, I think, you know, if procedurally, we need to have, you know, the continuance follow a timeline, and then, you know, continue it after that, like, that's what we need to do. I, I would, I would rather be able to continue it indefinitely if, if, if needed. I think these meetings are going to take a long time, committee meetings. You know, I, I think the first choice, my first choice would be to look at a different approach entirely. But if that's not, you know, i- if that's not something that, you know, the rest of the commission wants to do, I, you know, I'm, I'm okay with looking at it, you know, from, from these three neighborhoods, but, you know, getting more community inputs. And if there is consensus around, you know, some level consensus in these neighborhoods, then, then we go to a vote and, you know, then, you know, maybe it gets adopted. You know, if there's not, I think, may, I, I think if it fails a second time, you know, we might, we might need to consider a different approach. But again, I, I, I think, I, I appreciate all the work that staff has done. I think it's been very thorough. And, you know, I, I think you've really gotten to details a lot. And, you know, I, I think, you know, there, there's, there's going to be more, regardless of what happens, there is going to be more changes, you know, through tax amendments or map amendments, when, when the new comp plan is, is done. So, you know, it's, this is all, you know, testing the waters. It's, it's still very new stuff. So, but, but, you know, I appreciate all the hard work that's been put into it.
So I just want to be clear, if we decide, if commission decides to hold, it's not necessarily a fail. We're asking for hold. And then what we're asking staff to do in the interim is to work with council and community organizations to make sure there's additional, because there's already been robust engagement. We just want to make sure that there's additional.
Yeah.
That's okay. I just want to, I just want to get it clear on the record. And so, given that, Commission, I, I think that we're pretty clear that we want to hold, and that we will hold. So we'd need a motion from the floor to hold, with a condition to continue to work with community organizations and council in the interim to bring it back in 2025. Okay, thank you. Do we have a second? Second?
Second.
Commissioner O'Neill. Okay, so then we're going to do roll call. Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Gammy.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Maza.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill.
Aye.
Thank you. Kantine is not here. Commissioner Ruiz?
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so the hold passes. Thank you so much. I'm sure that somebody will be in contact with you. In the meantime, have a great evening and happy holidays to all of you. Yes. Thank you. Get home safe.
Yep. Thank you all.
You're welcome. Okay. We'll get noted, we'll get notification out. Yes. All, everything will be clarified. We'll get something out. Hold on one second.
So I'd like a little bit The mics are picking up.
Yeah, the mics are picking up. Do apologize. Want to call some order here? Thank you. And I do apologize. Everyone will get notification. Okay?
We'll have time to, but it's not January 14.
You'll get time and we'll make sure notification is out. Thank you. Have a great rest of your day. Okay, so logistically, we still have one more item that we're at least going to bring up, that will be, that will hold. And that is agenda item. Let me find my agenda, because I've scratched all over everything.
It's agenda item six, and we're just reading it in so we can officially postpone.
Yes. We're going to read item. I do apologize. We've got to read this last thing in. Thank you so much. We are at hearing in action part two, item number six, which is the housing needs assessment zoning amendments. This is the zoning tax amendments related to inclusionary zoning, accessory dwelling units, parking reform, changes to minimum lot size or minimum lot size per unit in residential zoning districts. And this is citywide. Presenting here would have been Andrew, Kate, Cory, and Paul. Just to get on the record, we are postponing and holding this until January 14. Thank you so much, everybody. We had to get that on record. Now, do you need anything more from me on that? Oh, wait, we do need a vote on that. Vote on that, that hold. Yeah, motion to postpone. Commissioner Gammy, a second, is from Commissioner Ruiz. And I'm going to go in order. Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Gammy.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Maza.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz.
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now moving on to the final agenda item. Under agenda item F is the director's report, and we will now give that to Mr. Dash.
All right. I will be brief commissioners, because there will be some follow up on this. You know, I just wanted to make, make sure that, you know, there will be correspondence coming from staff, you know, that was mentioned, the comprehensive plan work. So the city is, you know, is nearing the launch of the citywide comprehensive plan, which will, there'll be kind of further, you know, items to come and, and to be able to note about that. But as we get into 2025, we are going to be, need a commission representative, you know, that is going to be working with staff and working with, you know, government working group. And so, and this will be a commitment for a commissioner, you know, and that we do anticipate that, you know, we'll be having, you know, kind of multiple months over, or multiple meetings over the next two years. But we want to be able to have somebody to be able to give the commission perspective, you know, because obviously, there are going to be a lot of recommendations as we move through what the vision of the city is over the next 25 years, you know, that are going to relate to, you know, not only the commission's role in the development review process, but also the commission's role relative to future plans and their adoption proceedings. And, and so, you know, your role looking at the future of the city is really imperative, you know, as a part of that. And so, you know, like I said, I just want to make sure that staff, you know, making sure that you know that that is a commitment, but, you know, we'll be following up and detailing that further. And want you all to consider amongst yourselves, you know, who the best representative from the commission would be. And so, and other than that, you know, just this being our, our last commission meeting of 2024, you know, just want to thank you all for your service, you know, and, you know, and, and wish you all a great holiday season.
Happy New Year.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dash. And thank you to all of you, staff, commissioners, the like, for all that you do and your service as well. Thank you so much for hanging out this evening. We know that this was a long day. Court reporter, woo, I don't see you there now, but I'm hoping you're still there. All right. So we'll make a motion to adjourn for today.
I moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Fantastic. Happy holidays, everybody. Thank you so much.
I know, right?
Be careful getting him, everyone.